All right, good evening, everyone. Welcome to our September 25th, 2025 Planning Board Special Workshop tonight. Before we begin, we will go do roll call. Cheryl Ballantyne.
Here.
Dick Taylor.
Here.
Rosemary Eva.
President.
V A Lou.
President.
Stu Hardy.
President.
Adam Repozza.
President.
Alan Myers.
President.
I'm Phil Gerlach, I'm the Chair. We're joined by Ashley Sweet, who is our interim planner and administrative officer, Todd Romano, who is our land use counsel and assistant solicitor, and Edward Tella, who is our land use clerk. So tonight, for anyone who's coming along with us, we don't have any applications before us, right? So this is not like a usual meeting. This is a very much a roll up the sleeves and tackle some of the sort of more nuanced, nitty gritty work that typically comes before the board that we have to tackle from time to time in order to just make sure that what we are doing on an ongoing basis is as efficient and effective as possible. So we have a lot of sort of nitty gritty work to get to tonight. And before we start, I'd like to just, just call out for the record and note the huge amount of prep work that Ashley and Todd have put into this and for the support around getting these workshops up and running and making sure that they are organized and effective takes a lot of work. So I thank you guys in advance on that. We're going to be presenting things up on our very crafty screen over here. This is a total MacGyver sort of situation here, but it works and I'm appreciative of it. We will be going through things. So again, it's, it's not sexy, but it's necessary work by the planning board. So with that, I think we should dive right in. Our first agenda topic is a discussion on amendments to Appendix A zoning ordinance. There's a lot of things to cover here. Todd or Ashley or who's walking us through this?
Thank you, Bill. I'll speak for Ashley as well. Some of the things you'll see tonight are things that we need to fix.
Steph Micah.
There it is. Are things that we need to fix that we've been keeping notes on. Some things we have to fix because it changes in the general laws. So we're not going to belay it, let's just go right ahead. At one point, the definition of earth removal was identified as not correlating to what is in the actual code of ordinances. That's why we have this amendment here, just refers right back to the earth removal ordinance. Keeps things in sync for you. Stu, you're very pensive, see.
Should we be, should we be taking a vote after each one of these items or can we just take one vote?
This is a workshop, so you're not even required to take any votes. You tell us if you want something changed.
Yeah, this is input and edit on the fly.
So if we don't say anything, it's, it's a go. It's a go. Okay, that's fine.
Rosemary, do you want to?
We can't vote. It's been the policy of the farm in the past that we cannot vote at a workshop.
Yeah, it's not appetized for that anyways.
Right.
Just a workshop.
So just to clarify, we're going to, whatever edits you give us, Todd and I will make those and you'll get this back as a package to then send over to the town council. So if you have thoughts on these now, let us know, we can make those edits. We can have that discussion, but it will come back to you for you to send it over to the town council.
At that time, no more.
Yeah.
That's when you would vote to send it over to the council. The zoning portion of it at least, yes.
Everybody clear on that?
I'm, I'm clear on that.
Okay.
I wasn't before, but I am now.
Great.
No, I think that's a great way of approaching it. It'll move things along quickly.
Okay.
Hopefully.
Yeah, anybody, anybody have any concerns on the earth removal update? All right.
Next question. Is it possible to make it larger?
No, it's not. This is all we have tonight.
So you can't make the screen a little bit larger so that...
Can you maybe, Todd, can you hit a plus on the, on the Zoom on your laptop maybe once?
Hey, do you have hard copy that you can?
Yeah. Yeah, there we go.
Thank you. What I'm showing you now, I stole this from One Socket frankly, in its transition rules as to nonconforming structures. I don't know if you've all had an opportunity to review, read through this, but it, it lays out that a legal nonconforming structure is that and you can't do anything with it. And then it tells you what you can do with existing legal structures, structures, lots, previously issued building permits, previously issued variance in special use permits, because those are treated differently than a nonconforming use is treated. And then what we do with pending applications. I thought it was pretty standard language, but what do you think, Ashley?
We don't have any initial concerns. I think we've always, I think it's, it's pretty clear language and it takes away any ambiguity.
Could, could one of you just comment just for the benefit of everyone as to why we're tackling, like what if any deficiency did we have that this helps correct or clarify or modify or what happened?
What the board doesn't see are a lot of the questions that we receive from the building official and zoning official. And this helps give them some structure that they can then refer to.
It leaves less up to interpretation where previously the language was somewhat vague and they have the, the zoning official has the ability to interpret the zoning ordinance and we're just trying to give clearer language so there's less necessity for interpretation and it's more standardized language.
So it clears up the ambiguity, it makes it more useful to those who need to refer to it, which should help remove abrasion and confusion there. My only question was on top of page four, I think the first instance, we see it in sub item E, the 180 days. And if Todd, if you're sort of doing a lift and shift here, maybe that just answers the question, but I didn't know if that was a standard length of time or timeline is 180 days the best.
It, it was a steal from Socket, but I think that's six months.
It's fairly standard.
I think it is.
Okay.
And there may be something in the building code as well to that. Do you know?
I don't, I don't have any issue with, I just wanted to make sure that it's consistent with sort of perhaps, you know, what folks are used to.
Yeah, it's six months, so it gives people time to get whatever necessary permits they are, are required to have other than just the building permit to go ahead, right?
Yep.
And to line up contractors.
Does that include delays from the cities?
Well, it's, it's 180 days from when the building permit is issued. I don't know what other delays there may be from the city.
Building inspectors, inspection of jobs and various things like that. We've seen that here too especially.
What it is though, Alan, it just says construction began with 180 days.
And we understand that all the strike throughs are the removal and the yellow is the new word.
Correct, so I'll explain that.
Yeah, let's, actually that's a great call out, we should do that from the start.
All strike throughs are removed. Underline is new, new language. I highlighted some language where it's embedded within a paragraph and doesn't stand out easily just to call it to your attention.
So everyone's clear? Underline is net new, strike is remove, highlight is just to help call the attention to it.
Right, like this, like these ordinance changes have no highlights, but it's all new language, right?
Yeah.
So, excuse me.
Yes, ma'am.
I was, I just got this yesterday.
Rosemary, I know and I anticipated you saying that and I apologize.
I understand.
We have a lot, you have no idea of how much Tibbeton occupies our time beyond its board.
Let me finish please. I mean, I didn't know what this transition rules were and by you explaining it now, I mean, the, this came from the building official and the zoning official, more or less, I mean, because we don't deal with the permitting.
It's a result of questions that we get a lot related to things that are nonconforming or things that were previously, you know, required a special use permit and now it's a permitted use because we didn't make a bunch of changes that, so this is just an attempt to make it much clearer when you have a nonconforming use, this is how it's treated. When you have a special use permit, this is how it's treated. And it, it just lays out clearly that this is how, how nonconformance is handled.
Thank you.
I'll be going with transition rules. I am not wedded to anything I've written, so please tell me if there's something you want changed, okay?
And I think, given that we know that you haven't had a long period of time with the document, if you come up with things after this meeting, as I said, our intent is to make the revisions that you're, that we come up with or that you ask questions about and have to clarify. If something, you know, if you think of something afterwards, let us know and then we can, we can work that language or we can make a comment in the revised version and then if we could discuss it before you vote to send it, we could have a discussion about those items so the whole board is aware.
Really just a first pass through here for you, okay? We understand that. So the next section is prohibited uses. It struck us that we prohibit manufactured home parks or mobile home trailer parks, but we have the ARMAK and there's an inconsistency there. Thus the highlighted language unless part of an age restricted mixed use community.
So I have a question about that. If it exists, it could be preexisting nonconforming, but if we add this, that means that new age restricted mobile parks can come into.
Which you already have. You have the age restricted mixed use community, which allows manufactured homes, but also had a restriction of prohibiting manufactured homes. So that's a conflict. So this clarifies that conflict. You can have those manufactured homes as part of an age restricted mixed use community.
Personally, I thought we had it there, but we went back and forth on a lot of those.
You're okay?
I'm good.
Stu?
I'd just say that contrary view, which is our ARMAK, age restricted mixed use community, is a wonderful amenity for Tibbeton, I think. I think it, when it's, when it's up and running properly, it provides housing to a lot of people in a very nice setting that's affordable, has a lot of retired people, well, it's age restricted. And we don't want to foreclose the possibility of doing that again in some other part of town if the need arises or economics are there. So I, that's fine, this is all good with me, I'm supportive.
Yes, Rosemary?
Could I make the suggestion? That is an overlay district, the ARMAK.
Yeah.
Could we perhaps add like in parentheses, section of...
Sure, that's fine.
Reference to the zoning section?
Yeah, I think so.
Like of the ARMAK?
Section 16, you know, make it more explicit than if you can go back and, and find it because I had trouble finding it. Just a suggestion.
Again, I, I think that's a great suggestion and here's why, because if you think about the usability of this documentation, if we make it easier for someone to go cross-reference and not have to spend minutes or hours trying to go find, you know what I mean? That improves the usability of the documentation, which is a conflict.
Thanks.
Are we ready to move to adaptive reuse?
Yes. Okay. So the state changed, they changed a lot of the adaptive reuse statute. They've included mills, as you can see here now, which I don't know how they missed in the first instance, but then eligibility. What, I can read this. Development shall have access to public water and sewer services or shall have access to adequate private water such as a well or onsite waste water systems approved by the relevant state agency. I took that language straight from the general laws as well as the following. A building previously used for industrial or manufacturing uses shall be vacant for an industrial use greater than one year prior to the submission of the application for an adaptive reuse project. Actually, the general laws, words that funny in a weird way, so I think I improved it. Do you understand what that means?
I, I understand what it means, I'm, I'm curious. My question was around, what is the significance of the one year timeframe? Is there something behind that or is it just? Yeah.
I know the intent was that we, there was a concern that they would start tossing people out of manufacturing and industrial properties in order to put in housing and that we did not want that to be the case. Certainly, we want you to use, reuse the industrial or manufacturing structure if it's not viable for industrial or manufacturing anymore or it's been vacant for an extended period of time, then that makes sense. But there was a concern that we don't have a lot of industrial or, or manufacturing across the state and that we should not incentivize like throwing people out of those buildings to put in housing.
Yeah, schools also. We had an issue with schools this year and that came right after, I think it was 45, 53, 10, that bill that passed that allowed them to use vacant schools for, and the timing was terrible, Fort Barton. So I think that's a good addition, make it one year vacation, you know, vacated for a year would be very good to stop the thought process of happening of closing schools to make room for things like what happened last year.
Well, I'll say this, Alan, you bring up a good point. The general law only talks about previously used for industrial or manufacturing uses, does not specify schools.
It says schools.
But only that vacancy requirement is only for manufacturing and industrial.
Maybe we ought to look at that.
That's the law, the state law.
That's what the general law says.
Is it vacant, meaning it's silent or is it, it could be added to it or is it specific, you cannot include schools?
Can we add schools, a vacancy of school for one year?
No. So the, I think, I don't know if you actually, Alan, read the, the original date which I have about schools being able to be moved into, they already, that legislation already has something around it.
It was six months prior to the acknowledgement of a closing school, they were able to stop looking at it.
Yes, but what you're talking, we, if you're saying that the intent was to close Fort Barton simply to put housing in.
No, I just said the timing was so bad.
Yeah, yeah.
It presented an opportunity that I think has happened across the state and other places. I, I, because I'm in contact with so many people across the state in different towns and they're like, hey, how come all of a sudden now we're being defunded this year? I know that magically schools are being vacated right after this law. It was just bad timing, I guess. So it's, is it a rule that says that schools can't be added to that or is it just? If it's silent, it's silent.
It's not silent, but it says it's industrial and manufacturing again.
Well, it's just the industrial, right? There's a vacant of industrial, is it? This is just an environmental issue because it just says shall be vacant of industrial use, not industrial or manufacturing use. So you read the whole thing and it really just points on industrial use and it can't be used for industrial use a year prior to any eradication. To me, that just looks like an environmental issue.
That may have been, I may have left a word out or maybe you can tell what somebody did.
I can tell you the discussion around the reason for putting this in was not, not environmental.
But the wording lends it, lends you to think that, lends me to think that, I don't know.
But like you said, the concern about them throwing out manufacturing companies to make room for below, low income housing or whatever they're going to do with it, it, it does go along with what I'm talking about, schools. They can find marginal school systems and say, hey, you know, we can do this and it happened, so why not?
The general law only talks about industrial use to your question, Alan. Says previously used for industrial or manufacturing, which has not been vacant of an industrial use for less than one year. So that's poor drafting on their part, should have said industrial or manufacturing. To you, Alan, I don't know if we can add schools, religious facilities or anything else to this. I'll make a note to look into whether we can do that.
I know the law, the original law that you guys did have that six month look forward.
Well, this is the thing, is like going back to the 10, I don't know if people realize this, but to your point, there was, schools are being quote unquote, we're seeing a decrease in school funding because Gen Z is about half the size, or sorry, Gen, Gen Alpha is about half the size of the millennial population by like, like 50 million in the United States. And we've seen that decrease, right? So millennials is, will be the largest generation after the boomers, so millennials, boomers, Gen Z, Gen X, and then Alpha, all right? So we're seeing a decrease in population. So to some extent, like, there is a reason because there's, we just, enrollment isn't there. So I just want to be cognizant of like, to your point, we're going to have schools inevitably over time potentially condense because the population is almost halved.
But to your point, but to your point, these schools that may be closed because of say 50 or 60 like in Fort Barton, I think there was less than 60 students decreased, so they, they lowered our funding for this town and they chose Fort Barton. Now we're putting in 70, 800, 900 in the house of place. Within a year, we will have those students returned and instead of getting a $200 million new school bond, these schools are being closed and they're being used for something else that cannot be taken back. Now, if you gave it a buffer time that it could actually close for a year, with the schools, that would be times of the population, the buildings that come in that will introduce new students to that thing, so we don't have this crazy amount of, of, of lack of school space for these kids that are coming in.
So I think there's a couple of things happening. Going still back to the number of the generations have decreased and I'm with you, like my kid was at Fort Barton, so her class hacked, so I lived through the same error. The reality is there should be an appropriate planning and I think we're trying, my point is, is we may be trying to solve for something that is outside of the purview of this board in the sense of like, it's almost like, not that I'm saying schools are obsolete, but like thinking about the bigger driver of, at some point, some of the things that we use daily are going to be obsolete and, and sooner than later, so how do we solve for that? Not that schools will be, but if we're seeing that decrease, I just want to be cognizant of that, like, I get the point and hopefully, yes, they'll still be able to repopulate that school and still be used for education. I just, I just wonder if we're solving like, I know the emotional drivers behind it, but when you put the facts there, it's like, we're seeing a huge decrease in the population.
But we're seeing through the land use, we are seeing a big uptick in new buildings and new, new units being put into Tibbeton, so I think that will offset that quite a bit.
That's a thing, I don't know based on an example.
Especially with my younger family.
Yeah, we, we don't, we won't know that. Let's take the action in the spirit of trying to get through this. Let's take the action to have Todd see, to the extent that we can amend number four here, 11 dot B dot four, to include schools or any other type relevant structure. Certainly get the intent, the data may or may not support the reality of that, but let's first, let's cross the first threshold here, which is legally, can we even? And if we can do it, then we can begin the, the other conversation.
Okay. So, no? Good discussion. The state has however now created a new density matrix, or you'll call it. Very straightforward, four residential units, at least 10% lower moderate income and meet all other codes, there shall be no density limitation. And for all others, meaning those without the LMI units, Article Five is your, is your development standards, design, dimensional standards, excuse me.
I'm going to try not to open up Pandora's box here, but I'm going to ask the question, where does the previously articulated elements of the state legislation where the different density bonuses, there were variables in terms of the density bonuses depending on whether you had public water and or public sewer? How does that play into this, if at all? Because I'm not, it's not reflected here and this just seems to run in conflict, I guess is the word I would use.
Essentially.
Yeah, those, what you're talking about are the comprehensive permit standards, whether there's water, sewer or nothing. Yes, you have identified a conflict that I'm sure Ashley's group has already pointed out to the General Assembly while they were writing this.
So what, what is in here, just for the record, is, is lifted right from state law?
Directly, yes.
And we have no choice.
We have no choice in that.
But what we're noting is that it runs in conflict with other legislative declarations and guidance.
It will provide difficulties.
Yes.
Should this type of project present itself to you.
So can we, can we take a similar action as we did with the other item to see the, to explore the extent to which it's within our purview at the municipal level to try and course correct on this and eliminate the confusion and discrepancy?
We will look to see what can be done.
Can that be adapted with other municipalities? We have, we have this issue, I'm sure, every other town across the state is going to have very similar issues.
I, I would hope that.
Class action type, brought into the General Assembly.
Do, do town councils do something like that or they provided their?
Some, some town councils did, some, I mean, this, we did, we're, we're going through year three of these revisions. There has been some pushback, but I would say it's not, it's not affected anything.
Because like one of the challenges here, it's minimal building rehabilitation and fire code requirements, but it doesn't talk about resources, right? So if there isn't, for example, if, if there isn't public sewer, sewer and all that.
But before that, they have this eligibility standard of, in section 1.1 B3, you have to have public water or sewer or otherwise approved adequate private well.
Okay, so as long as we have that.
I mean, that, I, I won't say it's not important to have that language in there, but that's a, that's a given, like they're not getting anything without either approval to tie in and provide quotable public water or approval of a septic system that can handle whatever the density is that they're, they're proposing. So it's good that it says that in there, but they're not getting, that's, you don't pass out without those requirements anyway.
So for example, like the, the water studies that we're doing here, if we find out that over time the well quality changes throughout seasons or something like that and the water, it's still quotable but like not great and adding ore to that, that system, the fractured bedrock could be an issue, would that be a reason to stop this? Or as long as there are water, you can boil on a sink, we can have like infrastructure to relieve people.
There's scientific evidence to support denial of that project and the scientific studies show there's two gallons of water in dead of winter for all of North Tibbeton and I guess there's no other developments coming in, I think. Probably very likely.
But, I mean, the fact that B3 calls out public water, right? Like that sets the stage only.
But it doesn't say adequate public water, it just says public water.
Correct, and I'm trying, at this moment, I'm trying to draw a distinction between public water versus private wells.
I get it.
Right, you know what I mean? Adequate public water.
Which is a, a real issue.
Huge.
We've, we've made this point to them multiple times in their drafting language that you can't just say that people have access, like just because the line runs by your house does not mean you can actually get water. Right.
And I have to imagine the, and I don't want to put words in anyone's mouth, but the use of the term adequate without any operational definition of what adequate means does not really sit well in state law, right? Then you, it begets the question of, well, what does adequate mean? An adequate should be a municipal level exploration and determination based on the dynamics of the town in question.
And Ashley just said, you know, just because the water line runs from your house doesn't necessarily make it access, so what defines access to public water and, of sewer?
Made that point a couple of times.
I would say, I would say.
I'm not with you to the General Assembly.
To the general, to the drafters of... To the general, to the drafters of the bills, I'm not, not with you.
What, what was the actual bill in the, that we're, that you may be in conflict with, do you know that reference up yet?
The, well, this, you're talking about the LM, go back to the density calculation?
Yes.
So that would potentially be in conflict with forty-five fifty-three. Because in, in forty-five fifty-three four, it lays out the, the density requirements and says if you're providing twenty-five percent, you get this density, you know, this density, this density, depending on water, sewer, or OWTS. I think, Bill, your point being that this is a different numeric density for a different percentage and how does that interact with the comp permit law? And I think in some instances, it might disincentivize somebody from doing a comp permit because in, under this, they have unlimited density at ten percent. Why would I give you twenty-five percent for a set density? So I agree, in some cases, this could, this could disincentivize a comp permit, which I think providing unlimited density for ten percent is probably worse than outrageous density for twenty-five percent.
Okay, there are realities which will also restrict too, too heavy of a density, right? The size of the structure and then the size that you have to have for, by, by minimum housing codes for a structure within.
Or a unit within it. And it does limit that you cannot expand the building envelope of the structure unless it's for mechanical equipment or other. It's not, you can't just add on to an adaptive reuse building and put in more units in there. You have to use the existing footprint.
Or is it the minimum size?
There isn't one.
A three hundred square, for an apartment.
Oh, it's pretty small. I don't know what the, what the minimum housing code is, but it's not very big.
Two hundred square feet.
Nothing's very expensive.
Well, that's the problem.
So we have a couple of actions coming out of what we just covered. Generally under the theme of what flexibility did we have to modify the language to be more in tune with the local realities and demand? Do we wanna move on to the next set?
Sure. Still on the adaptive reuse, as Ashley just mentioned. Building envelope is now restricted unless it's expanded for purposes of building fire codes, HVAC equipment, stairs, and elevators. Existing setbacks shall remain, excuse me. It cannot be, uh, cannot go further into this setback. Increase in non-performing height remains the same. But they can all obviously get requested dimensional barriers. Okay?
I don't have any, this is straightforward. Anybody have any comments or questions on this one?
They changed the parking requirements, which are reflected here.
Just very quickly, Google searching it and I would wanna verify this, but it's giving me a reference back to state law. The minimum unit size for a dwelling unit is one hundred and fifty square feet for the first occupant and a hundred and thirty square feet for an additional occupant. Additionally, every room for sleeping purposes must contain at least seventy square feet for the first occupant and fifty square feet for each additional occupant.
So I imagine you'd wanna tally all those numbers up and you'd get a sort of more aggregate.
But I think if you have a one person, like if you have a studio, you're at about two hundred, maybe just over.
Does anybody have any concerns about the parking requirements changes? Section E.
Okay, thank you. Have graphical correction there, may have. Otherwise affidavit is not required to certify that the use has been not used or the structure's not gonna be used for industrial use for one year or more.
Okay. Again, same, this is almost the same exact language as before.
Oh, yes, yes. Alright, accessory dwelling units.
Todd, before you, before we, can you just tee up this section? It's an important section with sort of the source of this game.
So I think it was two years ago that the General Assembly actually passed legislation requiring municipalities to have ADUs, accessory dwelling units. It's a bill for one and everyone's side. They didn't, they didn't do a good job, I'll say, writing it. They didn't what they require, but it's in conflict that we tried to address and manage for you.
And this, this language actually gives the town a little more protection than we would have if we had no language at all.
Exactly. This language provides the maximum size ADU, one is the bedrooms that are allowed, alright? Not having any language right now, they can ask for any size ADU.
So we had this discussion earlier and agreed that it would be wise to have language for the town.
Yeah, cause right now, you, the state, the state law mandates that you permit these and without your own language that tries to wrangle them as best you can under what, whatever they wrote into the law, you're just stuck with what the law says. And one of the provisions where they actually do give the municipality the ability to do something or make a decision is in restricting the size of the unit. So without your own ordinance, to Todd's point, there is no restriction.
So, so we begin with eligibility. This is per the state. In these three scenarios, ADUs shall be allowed. Where it's an owner occupied property, has a reasonable accommodation for family members with disabilities. There's no restriction on the size of the lot, the size of a home. For a reasonable accommodation for family member, disabilities, they get that ADU.
There's also no good language about how you satisfy this requirement.
That was my next point, right?
Sorry.
No, no.
In terms, in terms of the definition of what a member of the family with a disability actually translates into, that is open to interpretation.
To deny me if I came in with a doctor's note from my mom or my cousin. I don't know how you would say otherwise.
Theoretically, I'm sorry, again, we could probably look at this general laws and how it defines a person with disabilities. And it's gonna be a hard, a hard line to hold on that. Uh, cause how do you ask somebody for proof of that, right? Without starting to violate HIPAA regulations? And then Ashley's next point is gonna be, I'll still clarify on this is, what about when that family member moves on? And you have this ADU. Any Tom, Dick, or Harry could pull that?
The law actually says that you can't revoke the ADU for a change in occupancy. So I could come to the town, get it permitted under the premise that I have a disabled, you know, cousin. You give me the permit, I never move them in. Or I move them in for a week and then I move them out and then I rent it to whoever I want. And you can't take it away from me after that.
So Dobbs technically in some ways impacts HIPAA. I don't know if people realize that.
Say it again?
So Dobbs, the overturn of the law impacts HIPAA. It doesn't, so HIPAA technically is not federally protected anymore. So I don't think people realize that.
No.
So, um, so to some extent, if it were to be made to Supreme Court, it would be, I'm not like, you could ask somebody for that right now.
Good luck.
So.
I'm not advising anyone to ask.
I'm just saying, but there HIPAA no longer, hospitals obviously choose to.
Yes.
Protect that information, but from a legal standpoint, there's no federal protection.
How do you regulate these things, right? Someone puts an ADU and they back you out, the person who moves out passes on or doesn't? My point is, what do you do? You're not gonna go bulldoze that, that property. Uh, it's gonna be there anyhow, so someone else will live into it. I mean, you could always limit it to family members.
You can't, the town cannot.
Well, I meant, that's, that's something that they can do, but I mean.
You can prevent them from installing an extra electrical meter. You can do something like that, or you can do one home. You can, you can allow another meter to install down additional.
I think you can. Kind of an exercise of utility to try to figure a way to legislate with the state.
Or you can have its own independent water meter.
The state has legalized two residential structures on every lot, okay?
That's the way you need to look at this, cause that's what this is.
And if the person moves out, you're not gonna bulldoze it, so it's gonna be there. So it's their property too. Maybe they have their kids who wanna move in back there or something.
Well, I think the, the.
Or the parents.
The, the problem, the problem with it though is that if it, if it is, if it is developed under the situation that it is for a reasonable accommodation for a family member with disabilities, there's a, there should be a reasonable expectation there that it stays for that purpose and that, yes, you could fill it with another person for that purpose. But the law actually says when that person moves on, it's, it's a, it's wide open. It's no longer for that person with disabilities, it's a second habit.
So if the law says that, you can't do any about it citywide, you know?
No, no, you can't.
It's just all about that.
So it gives, it's essentially, it's the ability to establish an ADU on any lot with no restriction whatsoever under the premise that I have a disabled family member and then I can use it for completely different purposes.
So from a, from an eligibility perspective, this is being dictated to us by the state?
Yes.
We have practically zero ability to influence this. I, I would recommend we sort of, I mean, we could.
We could beat this up all we want.
We could beat this up, I know, but I mean, this is a few, perhaps we move to dimensional requirements.
But we're doing what we can to, to protect the town a little bit. So that's all we can do tonight and I'm entirely on board with it.
And, and we've had, Todd and I have had lots of conversations about the way that the law is structured is that it ties the town's hands in that you cannot regulate the ADU any differently than you regulate any other accessory structure. So however you treat sheds for, for, you know, lawn mowers, you have to treat ADUs for people to live in. So if we place restrictions on, we can't place any restrictions on an ADU that we wouldn't al- also place on somebody's shed or poolhouse or whatever else would be, or barn.
You could be more restrictive as to other accessory structures.
But not ADUs.
Correct.
Interesting.
That's the only way I can figure out how to keep some semblance of, of a reasonable accessory structure, right? Is that you can be more restrictive as to an accessory structure and let the ADUs have its own less, less or more permissive rules.
Can we block an accessory structure on a property that has an ADU? Because like in reality, someone could have a garage with an apartment above it and then from an ADU in the back and wouldn't hold that.
You can only have one ADU per lot.
Okay, so, uh, the, the apartment above the garage kind of counts?
Yes.
As in, okay, even if it's connected to the house.
So even if you had a house and then you built an ADU and then you built a barn, you couldn't convert that barn to an ADU cause you already have an ADU.
Okay.
The law is clear, don't say one ADU per lot.
We have a question.
How that, three or four?
One, one ADU per lot. It doesn't differentiate between the principal use being an apartment building or a single family home.
Right, so one of those apartments with an ADU wouldn't have the right to build another house on the property.
No, you would have the right to have an ADU.
Oh, you would, okay.
Yep.
But each apartment does not have a right to an ADU or something.
One lot, one per lot.
You, you, you give one additional.
Yeah.
On the quantity regard, so you feel the fact that one apartment has a.
So I'm gonna ask this question again, it's gonna be slowly done. If it's, it doesn't matter if it's connected or disconnected, correct?
ADU can be part of the primary structure or detached structure.
So that actually kind of, okay, that's.
I see, hang on two seconds, Rosemary.
She had, excuse me, she had septic, she had well, or septic.
I don't think it cares.
I don't think it, they don't care as long as it's permitted.
Right.
So if it's, you can put in a new septic or you can expand an existing septic or you can tie into capacity in an existing septic, it doesn't matter as long as you have.
The EM.
As long as you do something.
Okay, and, and if, there's an in-law apartment in there already, in-house, they can still put up another building.
That was the question I asked, the answer's.
You get one ADU per lot.
One ADU. But to your point, Rosemary, we have to know that, or it has to be on record that they don't have a legal apartment, right? So that's the other.
I know.
There's one of those.
It's an enforcement issue, very difficult.
Yeah. I see we have some questions, we're gonna try to keep this moving, but.
But what this is saying is that an ADU is only for family members with disabilities.
That's only number one.
That's only number one, there's three.
You could do any one of those.
Scenarios here.
It's or, or.
And further down in the law, it specifically says that you cannot revoke an ADU for tenancy. So if my disabled family member leaves, the town cannot take the legality of that ADU away.
That's, would you put that the ordinance wasn't necessary?
Yeah.
It's in the general laws.
Question?
Yeah, I think the town has more control on it than what you're framing for. If an ADU was on that property, proposed for the property and you're on a septic system, advanced septic system or well without one property, I would tend to think the town and DEM have the ability to deny that because the land, if it's a small lot, cannot handle a septic system.
Town cannot, DEM can.
Yes.
Not so much the well, but your septic system, you can just modify the existing house or the, or the bedroom.
And it does, look, it does say that you have to be able to tie into an existing OWTS, a newly permit, it does, they don't care, but it does, the law does say you do have to, you have to have wastewater treatment. That, but we don't have any control over wastewater treatment. The town doesn't have any say. Either the wastewater district says yes, you can tie in or DEM says yes, you could expand your septic system or you have capacity or you could put in a new one. We have no, the town has no control over it.
The town doesn't. Yeah, so if you were to apply for an ADU, um, the town just makes you, at least as far as I remember, you have your, your ASBIL, but the town makes you, uh, provide from DEM. And the ASBIL doesn't, you know, coincide with how many bedrooms you're gonna have at the end of the project, the town will make you modify whatever, the existing, so it's in compliance with the existing septic system. If you don't then it's in the end.
Well, the law says that you. Yeah, but the town doesn't have the ability to deny somebody anything. Right, I mean, you can't get a, obviously you can't get a building permit if you don't have an approved septic.
So that's the town, right? So if you say, I'm gonna put an additional bedroom on a three-bedroom septic system.
With that, with anything, whether that's an ADU or an addition with a bedroom or anything, the town is not gonna give you a build, so it's, it's not unique to ADUs.
Okay.
But what we're saying actually, the reality is, is we, the town can't block them from upgrading their septic system. There's no law that we can do.
DEM has total purview over the permitting of septic systems. They, they changed the rules over, like we have no control over wetland regulations, septic, none of that.
Do we wanna move to dimensional requirements, Sue?
We can, just quickly, the three eligible statuses, right? Fire right for an ADU, a family member with disability on a lot of twenty thousand square feet with primary residence as the use, primary use, and located within a footprint of the legal. a footprint of the legal conforming or pre-existing, non-conforming dwelling or detached accessory dwelling.
And number three does talk about a pre-existing dwelling and does not expand the footprint, but that, that doesn't reach backwards, so I can come in and put up a garage, and then I can come back and turn that into an ADU, or I can come to the town and put on an addition, and then I can come back and turn that into an ADU. So it's sort of meaningless language. It just makes me do it, do a step process.
I thought we fixed that, actually.
How? I mean, what, what is, we don't have a, a definition of existing structure in the sense that if I get a building permit and I put it up, six months later, or even a month later, it's existing. I don't know that you could put something in there to.
Uh, I think, I guess we're removing the word existing.
I thought we had discussed the idea that you, there's no, there is no good way to.
Right, so, so, the debate we've had, the, the statute says located within an existing footprint of a primary or accessory structure, right? By right. So the debate was, what is existing? It doesn't make sense to require an existing garage, detached garage, for example. Let me do a better way. I have a house right now. We have the ADU ordinance in place that says the existing structure. I come to the town, I say I want to build a detached garage. They say, fine, and that, now I now have a existing garage that I could have put an ADU onto. But what if my intent is initially to build a garage with an ADU above it? Does it make sense for me to have to go through this permutation of building the garage, waiting two days, coming back and saying, I want ADU? Because now I have an existing garage.
So we chose to leave out the word existing because it doesn't matter the day.
Form of or function. Yeah. And it's, honestly, I think it's deceptive to all of your neighbors, right?
Go get a permit for a garage and then later turn it into an ADU.
Yeah. So, in the way that it's written this way, it forces everything to be upfront. Yes.
Yes.
And transparent from the get-go.
Yes.
Oh, which is. Allows you to be upfront, I should say. It enables it, whether or not you are, is.
It still might not be, but.
It is six hundred degrees in Arizona.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's six hundred degrees in the fan, like, it's super, uh, just audibly distracting here for me, at least. Dimensional requirements, um, ADU shall comply with dimensional standards for accessory structure being the setbacks, and then the unit size is set by the general laws. One bedroom, nine hundred square feet, or sixty percent, the principal dwelling, whichever is less. Two bedrooms, twelve hundred square feet, or sixty percent, whichever is less. And this is defined by this? As the minimum size required. Yes.
Max.
If you'd like something larger, with one or two bedrooms, you tell us, we'll change that out.
No, we're allowing maximum.
What is the maximum? No, minimum. In our ordinance, we say max.
If I wanted a two-bedroom ADU on my property, my house is only seven hundred and twenty square feet, so that would be a really small two-bedroom. And that's, I wouldn't be a lot to.
No, you could.
Square foot accessory, could I? It would have to be sixty percent, that would be the smaller of the two numbers.
Whichever is less.
Sixty percent of the size of my house. Not really fair. Or Adam, his little house.
That's.
Well, and the, the idea behind it is that it's, I think, you know, to Todd's point, the reality is, is they permitted two houses on every lot, but the idea with the, with the size restriction and the percentage is to try to at least keep it accessory. So it's not something that ends up becoming larger than the existing house on the property.
Yeah, 'cause you can build yourself a new house and turn the old house into an accessory, couldn't you?
Yeah.
Oh, you could.
You could.
Why not?
Okay.
Yeah, you could. Feel better?
Do you wanna use, uh, the U standards? Move on?
Do that.
Only permitted where there's a principal dwelling. Only one to the lot, that's just repeated there. And cannot be used for tourist or transient use, no airbnbs. Then procedural requirements.
Can I just?
Yes.
I did have a comment on this, and we're just looking at that here. Is, is that in line with wherever the council is? Like, are we out of sync on item number three?
That's from the general laws, actually.
Okay.
All right.
But what, why is thirty days in premises? So you can rent it out to a transient if it's less than thirty days? You can do short-term rentals in thirty days, right?
So long-term rentals.
You can't rank it for a tourist for longer than thirty days, right? Is that what this is saying?
Correct.
So you can, you can rank it out two weeks ago.
I, I think this might be wrong, because I think, I, in the sense of like, so there's a couple of towns around in California. Hillsborough, you had to sign on for a month to rent a new bed room. So I think it's meant to be like, anything less than thirty days is considered transient.
Oh, so transient.
So anything thirty days or more, I think that's what this, I don't, it's not written that way, but I think that's the, per se, or.
Transient would be less than thirty days.
Yes, and thirty days or more would be, that's how some areas got around it, right? You sign a thirty days lease for one day, for one week. So that they.
Yeah, it says defined, yeah, this is a definition.
Yeah, but we were trying to understand as transients. So technically, a transient should be defined as an occupancy under thirty days. This is, does not exceed. I guess it's the same thing.
It's the same thing. It's, it's awkward wording, I, I think, from a plain language perspective, it would be less than thirty.
It's like, it's what it is.
Well, it's, it's one through a posting platform. That's all of the.
The net-net is, that is straight from the state. And. So.
Thus.
The language is not, the language from the general laws states ADUs shall not be offered or rented for tourist or transient use or through a hosting platform such as terms are defined in forty-six, I'm sorry, forty-two, sixty-three point one dash two. So I'm going back in my memory, and I assume what I did was look at that statute, and it defines occupancy as not to exceed thirty days.
Occupancy. See that, yeah. So, but you, this is confusing. Like, the language, we know what the intent is, but what does this mean to you? That you can rent it over thirty, you can rent it for thirty days or more, as you.
My read of this, my read of this is that if you have a long, you can use an ADU as a long-term rental, which is defined as more than thirty days, but you cannot use an ADU as a short-term rental, which is less than thirty days.
That's what I thought, but that, trying to get that out of the sentence.
No, no, I completely agree with you. I, I think, again, it's, it's using.
Kind of the same thing.
Confusing, like, it, it does mean the same thing.
It's kind of the same thing. Someone could rent it for a summer, you know, level of New Jersey license plates out and all over the place, and, uh, they could rent it for a month at a time and break, go past that law.
Yeah, exactly. If it's above thirty days, it bothers us.
Just because they're not using a known platform, they could just have some, someone who was just doing an illegal, uh, rent thing, where they could rent out all these places which they pick in a database, but they're not a hosting platform, they could get away with it.
They just make their own websites. There's a place on Chicago called Barn, and when I got married the first time, rented that place out.
Yeah, it's not a.
So, it's not a platform, it's their own website.
Yeah, exactly.
So, that's the, I mean, it's gonna be hard to get through this, but.
By the time you find out someone's doing it, they're already gone.
Yeah. The thing is, though, is it will cut down on the, the turnover, right, because at least, if somebody comes for a summer, that's not such a good deal, does not mean people would.
So we're quoting, thank you for the edit, just to call it out. Todd made reference to the exact general laws here, so that we're crispy. So we're eliminating the confu- like, the silly language, not silly, confusing language, and just making reference directly to the applicable Rhode Island general law. Great. All right, let's move on. Uh, section D, procedural requirements. As she's, as she is, as she's very good at pointing him on certain words, I'm looking at the eligibility.
Maybe I missed it somewhere else?
Just looking at the eligibility section, and points out that number two is the only one that's required as primary use is residential. He questions whether therefore an ADU could be used or applied somewhere else. I would say no, because number one, you have to be an owner occupied residence, right? Property, owner occupied property. What would that be other than residence?
So that might work on that one.
What is occupied defined as?
I mean, I, I own, if I own the business and I occupy the business with my business, don't I occupy?
That's sort of.
I'm the owner, I occupy it. Doesn't say that it has to be.
Living there.
Living there. And on the third one, it doesn't say anything about it being residential or lived in. I don't know why this is just galling on me now. I've been in and out of this organs, like, this law a thousand times.
It's like, let's say, this type of.
But I was looking for the restriction for somewhere else, that it actually says that it has to be on a property that is res- like, that is residential, or residentially used.
Maybe we should revisit.
Look into it. Number C, U standards, ADU shall only be permitted on the same lot, where the principal use is legally permitted or legally free, this is non-conforming.
Residentially used. I was just looking through the law to find where it, but I didn't see anything. But we can, we can look at that again. Don't come back.
Well, in residential use, allow an owner to build, maybe renting the house, now we can put an ADU in there and do it together, but, another apartment as well, being the owner occupied, it could use both places as rentals.
You'd have to read C one in conjunction with N. Or.
But number one is the only one that has an owner occupancy requirement. We talked about an owner occupancy in this bill, and we tried to push that, and the house would, would not put in owner occupancy requirements because they said that that would kill ADUs.
It's the housing treaty, legislation.
Um, not specifically, no. But that was raised. We did bring that up. We did, there was, there, there was a push for owner occupancy, and they wouldn't do it.
It's only for residential, I'm sorry, go.
Yeah, no, 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 that's where I'm going. It's like, do we have the, uh, ability to course correct here?
We could try it, and if we're challenged on it, then we're challenged on it.
Yeah, I think, I, I mean, my two cents, and I welcome the, the input from the rest of the board, is that we aim to define this in a way, shape, or form that we feel is going to benefit the town and the citizens the most, and if we do get called out on it, then we'll cross that bridge if and when we get to.
Realize people who buy property just to rent it out the property, they can build an ADU on it, make a second apartment on every single one of their properties. So it's doubling up their, their, their investment just doubled.
I will say that.
It's just part of zoning, right?
Well, it's a residential, yeah.
Right, so I mean, you have a commercial property, you can't just build a residential property on.
Zoning is what these laws have, though, to the state house, when they come up with these, like, these policies, they say that you can't stop it even through zoning. They, they may give you some, some rules and some regulations, but like, the ADU thing was really a big push, shoved us down the cities and.
I, I, I get it where it's like, you know, you want zoning, residential zoning, right, and I, I hear you want to do whatever the state allows you for residential, but when it comes to mixed zoning, industrial, industrial, manufacturing, I, I, I feel like we still have some say what can be.
You don't, you don't.
No, you don't. I don't think so.
The state has a law that says that you have to have thirty percent fixed use in the commercial district.
Put it in, right. Anyone who lives away from the area.
There, you don't, you don't have any control that they don't give you.
Meaning that, if you, say like, you're, you're sixty-five years old inside of Florida, you keep your house, you rent it out, and now you can have a second apartment on there, now you, now you get, now you're a tycoon, all of a sudden, everybody who does that can have a second ADU in the property.
We can't stop that, though. We're just trying to keep it in residential. That's the thing.
Well, I'm, I'm trying to keep it in residential, and I'm trying to give you the option to do owner occupancy if Todd agrees that you can.
And that's, that's what, that's believable, and I think that was their intent, the state house, turn everybody into a city.
So, in order to try and bring this together here, what we wanna try to do is edit this so that we are putting forth clarity from our perspective around residential, owner occupied, right? Those are the two things that we wanna make consistent as far as eligibility, uh, as far as eligibility is concerned. Sure. So, number one, A1, I, I just put in, when the primary use is residential. Excuse me, that already had the owner occupancy.
Yeah.
Number two is already, primary use is residential. So do we need to say owner occupied in number two? I, I don't know if we can. That may be a bridge too far, right?
Okay.
Because the general assembly didn't, and, put it in there, although they put it, they knew that they could make that restriction because they did in number one.
That was deliberate, not necessarily an oversight.
It's also not in the list of you shall want.
Okay.
So.
I will look to see whether we can add owner occupied.
Okay.
To number two, then number three already talks about primary dwelling, or accessory structure to a primary dwelling, thus has to be residential use. Yes? All right, so the only question is owner occupied, that's A, A two.
Correct?
Yep. Good catch, Nash.
I'm a little disappointed in myself that it took that long, because I've read that bill a hundred times, and criticized it a hundred times, and didn't pick up on that one.
All right, so we're. For that point, I'm sorry, Bill, we also added residential use can use standards C one.
Yeah.
All right, so we are moving on to D, procedural requirements. This is from the general laws. ADU shall be allowed as part of an application for primary dwelling or subdivision. Be allowed as an application for accessory structure. Which goes back to our earlier conversation about existing.
Yes.
Accessory structure. Shall not be counted toward density or proposal, which is crazy. That's coming straight out of state law to reiterate again. No choice. Who wants to read it to you?
No. It's already been a long one.
Uh, you can consider these to be implied throughout the review process, does not meet, does not meet the, oh, they can get a variance. Oh, now that's the number six, gives you some definition as to the.
Exactly, so.
Oh, yeah, I did read that. Yeah, okay, so they allow for transient.
So, so Todd, actually, um, on procedural requirements, um, are you just repeating what the law states?
Yes.
Or are you?
Yes.
So we don't have any flexibility, one way or the other, there. So, so that.
The only time you'll see these is if they do come in as part of a subdivision application, otherwise, they're just going to get building permits.
Because I, I just wanted to make that clear, so we're not discussing what we don't have any authority to discuss because we're not state legislators.
No.
So, I, the procedural requirements, um, I don't, I don't see any discussion there. I don't see any discussion there at all.
Prohibited? I'm sorry, Bill, I'm.
Yeah. Let's move on then.
And, and this is why we don't have much say in procedural requirements or where they're allowed, unless the highest, is they're all from the general law, right? We just put them in here so everyone knows and can refer to it.
Yeah, we're making it easier for folks.
Rather than just referring them to the general laws, yes. Alright, so restrict, we cannot restrict tenants based on familial relationships or age. Cannot restrict or cannot require permitting fee that exceed those that would be charged for, uh, single family dwelling. Cannot require infrastructure improvements unless required by a state agency. That goes to your point, Adam, earlier about sub- tip systems. Cannot discriminate against protected populations. Cannot impose, this is the problem, one really. Cannot impose dimensional requirements or other development standards. And that other development standards, really, it's so nebulous, we don't know what, what that means.
But the courts will decide that later on.
At some point.
And we're doing our best to try to guide you guys to other accessory structures around that. Cannot require sub-dimensional standards. Another one, cannot require, require one-on-one street parking space.
So, again, I would just call the question in the spirit of sort of how much we are trying to get through here is knowing that this is straight from state legislation, we do not have the ability to modify this at all. I mean, I would say, Todd, I don't think it's necessary for you to read through every single one. So, as we go through this, I think it would be important at the onset or to specify whether or not it's just a straight regurgitation of state law or this is something that we have flexibility to modify.
ADUs are state law. This whole law to use is not listed in the table of uses. Couple of years ago, the general assembly changed this standard. It used to be if it's not on the table, it's prohibited. They changed that to now allow a mechanism for someone to present it to the zoning official or zoning board to have it be permitted. And we've cleaned this language up from what we had initially drafted two years ago, Stu, I guess. I think it's better, makes more sense. So if the proposed use is specifically, it's not listed in the use table, the owner may submit an application to the zoning board for evaluation and determination that the proposed use is of a similar type, character, and intensity as a useless in district use table. Zoning board shall have a public hearing, shall provide notice. Those notice requirements I took from what we did previously. If the use is found to be of a similar type, character, and intensity as an existing use, the use shall only be allowed in those zones where the, where the listed use is permitted by right or by special use permit. In the event that the, that the listed use, right, required a special use permit in the zone, then the proposed use shall also require a special use in that zone. Performance standards, special use standards apply to, to these new proposed uses. Uh, if the proposed use is one that's listed in prohibited use section of Article four, don't even bother following us. So.
So, so, so to sort of summarize, what we're doing here is we're providing the zoning official and the zoning board to review with guidance, direction, parameters to make a, a good decision when they're asked if a use is really similar to a, a use that is now an existing use in the use table. Otherwise, Katie bar the door, anything, you know, they, they might. So what we're doing is we're just, we're, we're creating a structure around this provision. And I like what you've done and I think it's, it's a great starting point. I don't have any, um, any thoughts for improvements here at all, but I just wanted to explain what we're trying to do.
Thank you.
Because the danger is that, that a, a, a zoning official or the zoning board may, um, may not have that guidance in, in, in those standards and the parameters that we're providing here. And, and might therefore make a decision that might not be good for the town of Tverden.
Does anybody have any other comments or questions or concerns on section twenty-four? Okay, moving on.
The amendments to the dimensional regulations, this is just to fix some things that were omitted originally. Oh, so PFD, we're adding footnote six to the side yard. Uh, that was accidentally omitted originally. And then in the TMS zone, we're adding footnote six for the side yard. Oh, I'm sorry, we're changing that to five feet and adding a footnote six. And then the front yard, we're adding footnote seven. And this, the genesis of this was, in one of the iterations of the general law amendments, they said subdivision lots could use the dimensional standards of the closest size lot that it fits or matches, right? So we actually had some lots that were ten thousand square feet. And John Frank said to us, well, then we have to apply the TMS setbacks for that, which means zero front setback, which doesn't make any sense in what was, was otherwise a one-twenty zone, right? It's foolish. So we added this footnote, other than on Main Street, the front setback shall be minimum of ten feet. You'll see later on when we get to a general law, since they have omitted requirement.
Third time's a charm on that one.
Omitted the requirement that you apply the standards of the closest size zone you would otherwise fit.
Well, they, they don't, they still left that in there. You, you wait now, you have to choose.
You can't use it, yes, yes.
So is it up to the applicant to choose?
Nope, it's up to the town.
It's up to the town. So who on the town, as in, or John Frank?
Zoning official, yeah.
It's his call.
Yes.
I have, I think that the, uh, traditional Main Street, there were houses there, residential homes, that have more than ten feet frontage. And I think that having a maximum of ten feet frontage is absolutely a ridiculous requirement because you have heights that are, you can have a, a three-story or four, I think it's fifty-foot height there.
I'm not proposing to change the zero to ten-foot maximum that was already in the TMS zone. I'm just adding a footnote seven to that to address other zones that may want to apply these standards.
But you're, what you're doing is you're telling.
This is part of our base code that the town adopted years ago now to drive the design of traditional Main Street zones.
So the only change there is the footnote, not the actual dimensional standard.
But it's yellow and it says maximum and it's.
It said that already, but the, the footnote is the only change.
It said that already.
It seems that we're tunneling. We're going to be, have you ever been in an area, I mean, a town where you have a little street like Main Road and you have three and four-story buildings that are ten, what, zero feet or ten feet off the sidewalk? You're tunneling, you're getting no light, it's dark, it's dreary. There are not even any rules for landscaping.
But we don't.
And so you're restricting the whole landscaping use of having anything nice. So you'd say, let's revitalize Main Road. Well, where can you revitalize it with landscaping if you have the buildings on the, on the sidewalk?
So just, just to be clear here, again, we, this is merely adding a footnote, it's not changing the numbers. And discussing traditional Main Street as a zone and all of that is not before us.
Then why is it yellow?
It's called out because it's called out in yellow because what we talked about before is that when the edit is really s- small.
Minor.
And by small, we mean it's a footnote number. It's, it's highlighted so that we on the board would not miss it when we were going through the review.
Well, I think that this needs to be revisited, especially within eighty percent coverage. I just think that it is. The Mount Hope Bay, the Mount Hope Bay watershed plan, area plan, says that the area is twenty-one percent over built with inferior surfaces. And what we're saying is that.
Jamie, I, I agree, I agree with your concern about North Tverden and about the Mount Hope Bay watershed. But, um, I think we need to leave this and move on because this is not the forum to, to discuss what we have already discussed at great length a year or two ago.
Right, so.
And which I'm very comfortable with, by the way.
So we're, we're gonna move on because this is not, it's not before us tonight.
The footnote is before you.
The footnote is before.
Which says the front back, other than Main Street, it addresses your issue, Jamie, that the front back shall be a minimum of ten feet. So that's what you're asking for, that's what the footnote is.
Yeah.
Maximum.
Okay, so now we get to the accessory structures portion of our discussion this evening. And again, as we alluded to earlier, it's because of what the general assembly said regarding ADUs. My opinion, my legal opinion is you can have more restrictive regulations for accessory structures than you can have for ADUs. So, um, I took your existing ordinance, tried to break it out to make it easier to read. So we have clearly a front yard, accessory structure, uh, requirements.
I'm missing filling the blanks.
We're gonna get there. I didn't want to take that discretion myself there, so.
Oh, okay.
Please. Alright. So front yard, accessory structure shall be allowed within the front yard, same as always, but not within the front yard setback, same as always, except for as provided in subsection B, which is screening and fencing. Rear yard, accessory structures included in the rear, including the rear yard setback, provided that no accessory structure shall be placed closer than five feet to the rear, rear lot line. That's what you have today. I've added this extra subsection A because of concern that you could have an accessory structure like an ADU of nine hundred or twelve hundred square feet, five feet off somebody's line. So I put in an accessory structure equal to or greater than blank. Square feet shall conform to the rear yard setback required to make principal structure for that zoning district.
Would, in this situation, so I flagged the fill in the blanks here, do we want to make reference back up to, uh, the specific section slash subsection, uh, that begins the size? Uh, where the hell is that?
I think, I think here you can pick the size.
B, B two I and B two.
No, my point here, Bill, is that you can pick the size. If you want to say four hundred square, two hundred square feet, I don't care what that number is.
Okay, okay, see, you don't have to.
At what size do you not want it five feet off of the property line?
Got it, because.
And to conform to the dimensional standards of the district?
Got it, got it. Those, yes, now I'm trying to, those previous numbers were ADU specific. We're now on to just accessories.
I will point out that your, the section above that struck would have let an eight hundred and sixty-four square foot size accessory structure five feet off of the property line.
Yes, that's your thing.
So is eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. It's just a random number.
Yeah.
Well, but, um, understanding that we have, so if somebody wants to build a barn, does this apply to that or is that hap- okay, so.
It would, yes.
It's all districts, right? It would, it, it's not just residential, it's also.
Correct. And yeah, we can certainly go down that path if you wanted to for specific zones. I don't know if you wanted to.
So the, this is just to sort of recap that. So what we're talking about here in terms of Article six, section one A, accessory structures is applicable in all zones.
Correct.
And so like I just did some criteria research and it gets a little, I mean, we're going to build, they can apply for variance, right?
Of course.
So, okay, so there's that.
So we can set the standard and to that point, if the whole wants to challenge that standard, there's a mechanism for that.
And you can set different, not, not, I wouldn't say necessarily district by district, but you could say that a, because we have had this come up where a commercial enter, you know, entity has asked for essentially an accessory structure. You, I don't know if you want to consider that when it is a, it is something other than a residential use, does that accessory structure, you know, do you allow that to be larger? I don't know. But we have had that come up before.
Well, and if that's the case, they could.
They can also get a variance.
Come before, that's the mechanism through which to engage us on.
In my mind, I started to work out different zones, different uses in the matrix, which is so complicated and you could never capture everything.
Yeah.
Height would be a, a big variance there. Height's more important than footprint, I think.
We've been lax height of the.
Depending on how close you are to the end. An accessory is twenty-five feet. Yeah. Someone wants a four-story building to be back with their lots and they get, pull out all the sunlight in their house.
Right.
Yeah. So, so it, so what is before us right now? In order to take advantage of the edit, Todd, that you put forth is to align on a square foot where up to.
You would have to comply with dimensional.
Anything above that square foot cannot go within five foot of the rear yard and would have to, uh.
Comply with the dimensional standards for the district, is it?
Exactly. So previously, it was some random number of eight sixty-four square feet, so.
That's, that's the.
I think it's, that's about it.
I mean, we have one.
I don't even know where that number comes from. Somebody, somebody copied it.
It's so oddly specific that something happened somewhere that, I think eight sixty-four.
Right, I would be much, much more restrictive than that. Um, I, I think that the, the people who live in Tverden do not want to see neighbors building large structures in yards that destroy the pleasant pastoral rural scenic, you know, view sheds that they now enjoy. So I would be, I would be inclined to come up with a much smaller number, but what is a reasonable smaller number? Keeping in mind that people that have a good reason to build large, you can always go to the zoning board and, and, and ask for, ask for a dimensional variance, but what is, what do other towns, what would, what would a community like Bristow or Portsmouth?
Are you saying to be put a, a five-foot setback?
Yes.
For a head of a building, a five-foot setback?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, there's three things to consider in there.
I, I'm trying to fill in a blank that, that, that we've got to fill in tonight.
Twenty-seven by thirty-two, so it's, it's, it's.
We're, we, we are being asked to fill in a blank tonight. Okay?
So the, you have two, you have two blanks in there. One is under the rear yard and one is under the side yard for the size that you want it to have to comply to the dimensional standards of the district. And then down below, there's the size requirement where we've put in the nine hundred square feet or sixty percent of the principal structure, whichever is less.
You can change that, that's it. You can change that number.
Personally, I think it depends upon the geography of the, the law having experienced something recently and.
I, I think a shed should be allowed pretty generally. I think a shed, I mean, ten by twelve. I mean, I think that's a good.
Which is a hundred and twenty square feet.
Hundred and twenty square feet, you know, that you should, could be up the board.
Oh, oh.
Well, sure, we got, we got.
I thought it was.
Let it spread to the rest of America.
I think, you know, the geography and I think, I've always lived with five feet. And it also depends upon the fire apparatus to go in there, the safety. So, and I think five feet would be my minimum.
For what size rooms? Or what size footprint for every size accessory structure? That's all.
Three hundred square feet. Fifteen by twenty.
Alright. So what Dick suggested is that three hundred.
Three hundred, so we have three hundred from deck, we have a hundred and twenty square feet from atom.
So anything that would exceed that would then have to push back from the setback. You couldn't be at five feet.
Especially the smaller, maybe, you know, a, a smaller neighborhood, you know, or give them the area a, a, a three hundred square foot accessory, that, that's a big shed. You know, to have right up against a very small lot, that could be four thousand square feet.
So again, I think from my perspective, knowing that there is a mechanism to go after a dimensional variance, you, you err on the smaller side, which sort of sets the, the standard. And then there is a mech- And then there is a mechanism if you want to go big.
Yeah, well, like three hundred square feet, because you might want a garage.
Yeah.
Something you can put a car in.
Ed just said, three hundred is not big if you have acres.
No, I know.
Four thousand, eight thousand square feet, three hundred square feet is massive, but you, if you're a neighbor's house.
We're, we're doing this for the whole town, all zones.
All zones, like Bill said.
We have to be very sensitive to North Taverton where I live and where the lots, neighbors.
So I, I would, so here's my, here's my recommendation. Hundred and twenty square feet, there's a mechanism if you want to go after a dimensional variance.
Which, I mean, for somebody who has a big lot, it, it should be made very simple, but.
Yeah, agree.
This is only in relation to the five yard.
Five feet.
Five feet.
Step back from the back.
Five feet. So if you're more than five feet off that, you have flexibility. So.
And we have a side option.
That's just the back.
Well, so, so I was gonna get there, but we'll, we'll, we'll check off rear yard here. So rear yard, the proposal on the table, again, this is just for edits, a hundred and twenty square foot. Going once?
Yes.
Going twice? Sold, all right. Side yard, make it consistent.
Yep, absolutely.
Any, all right, any, all right, a hundred and twenty square foot on the side yard.
What about number three? I mean, seven five, five.
Come on again? Okay, so other than an accessory dwelling unit permitted pursuant to Article four, Section twenty-three of this ordinance, an accessory structure shall not be greater than nine hundred square feet or sixty percent of the principal structure, whichever is less.
I just put nine hundred and sixty percent there because that's the smallest ADU. As I've said a couple of times, you can have, in my opinion, you can be more restrictive on your accessory structures than you can on your ADUs.
I, I vote for being more restrictive than nine hundred square feet. I, I like the idea of, well, I, I just think the nine hundred square feet is too large. I, I see where you.
Nine hundred is the size of a regular house, it's thirty-seven and a half by twenty-four.
Yeah.
One floor.
Yeah, and again.
Because we're talking about, again, the whole town of Taverton, all zones, and a lot of us live in, you know, in terms of population, most of us in the town of Taverton live in.
I would keep it that same on loss. I'll keep it that same number, a hundred and twenty square feet.
For accessory structure.
Yeah, right, well, that's aside from, that's aside from an ADU or accessory structure, then what do we call, what defines, what defines an accessory structure?
Detached garage is not one of those.
I, I agree, but I, I know.
An attached garage is not an accessory structure.
Detached.
It's part of the catch, it's attached.
So two-car garage is more a twenty-four, twenty-four foot, uh, by twenty.
Not just that, it's also for barns.
It's about nine hundred, my, my garage is a two-car, it's not completely seven hundred.
I will tell you that there are a lot of, the zoning board has a lot of applications for variances because the accessory structures are too small, the eight sixty-four was too small. But at the same time, you're stuck because if you make the accessory structure size, permit fifteen hundred?
You have to permit ADUs at fifteen hundred.
Right.
So you don't want to shoot yourself in the foot.
Right, so you can't be, I don't think you want to be larger than nine hundred.
Because then you have to allow ADUs larger than.
So a two-car garage, twenty-four by twenty, four hundred eighty.
Four eighty.
Four eighty, this is a two-car garage, twenty-four by twenty.
Good, let's, let's, let's keep it at that.
Four eighty sounds reasonable.
Four eighty sounds reasonable to me.
And then we have at what percentage, do we want to make that percentage less than sixty percent?
Uh, so whichever is less.
The shop might be greater than nine hundred square feet or sixty percent of the principal structure.
But if you make it less than that applies to ADUs also.
So can we eliminate that part, the over sixty percent part? You just scrub that completely, just put three little, that number and then remove that part totally?
Yeah, I was trying to give some possibility.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because if you have the five acre lot or twenty acre lot.
Right.
And the twenty-five hundred square foot.
Well, exactly, yeah.
Like Bill was saying, there's, there's a way for you to apply for something bigger regardless of whether that's in that sixty percent notation.
But the way that it's written, if it's four eighty square foot or sixty percent, whichever is less, right? So by going low on four eighty, I mean, what is.
That's what I was trying to figure out, just now.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, I'm gonna do the.
Depending on the size of the house, the detached accessory unit would be very weird looking if it was locked to a certain size and the house is very big too. So you don't want to have some weird little thing because you got four hundred eighty square feet, but you got a whole thousand square foot house on a big five acre lot, I mean, it's kind of weird looking.
Well, you should.
Usually you should have a, you should have a percentage in there too, so if you have a bigger house and bigger lots, it allows you more space.
Yeah, no, no, I'm not, I'm not disagreeing with that. I think, I think you can have that. But the way that this is written with that last phrase, whichever is less, so even in that scenario, Alan, that four eighty is gonna, if I'm reading this correctly, that four eighty is what rules here.
Both likely.
Because that is whatever is less.
Yeah, that's right.
In that particular scenario.
Yeah, to take that out and just really factor it out, the size, percentage size, so it's applicable to the size of the lot and it's applicable to the, to the facade of the house. Be weird having a little postage stamp of a, a garage right next to a house, if you had a big house, you had a twenty acres.
In, in theory, it could apply for a variance, in theory.
You don't have to have a tiny garage.
Man case.
I'm sure that's in the official definition of accessory.
Does that put zoning unit to go?
Other, other perspectives here?
Was the discussion you were thinking? Whichever is less, was that the discussion? If, if that's, if that's what you're thinking, then you have to put a cap of nine hundred square feet.
Because that's the, that's the.
The ADU size.
Yeah, you don't want to throw that into a tizzy.
It's fine.
So, I mean, it, it should be easy enough to go apply for a variance if you build a bigger building, you have a bigger lot. But I think for the sake of smaller neighborhoods, try to keep that building smaller.
Don't forget that your zoning ordinance also allows the zoning official to make modifications up to twenty-five percent for dimensional relief, so they could go get a modification from the zoning official and not have to go get a dimensional variance from the zoning board.
Hmm, so multiple mechanisms.
Yeah.
So we could, we could stick with. Four, what was it, Alan, four eighty?
Four eighty is a twenty by twenty four.
Yeah. Or sixty percent of the principal dis, principal structure.
Whichever is less.
Whichever is less. I mean, we could, we could go that route and then there's mechanisms, whether it's what you just talked about.
Modification or dimensional variance, depending on how much relief they're asking for.
Which enables the homeowner to right-size based on the particulars of their lot and property, all of that sorts of stuff.
I'll just reiterate, the zoning board is seeing a lot of applications for accessory structures, then you, that they, the application for larger than eight hundred and sixty-four square feet. Now you're making two-thirds of that of what was permitted previously.
But if we, so at eight sixty-four, you're only thirty-six square feet off of the nine hundred.
But this says anything other than accessory dwelling, so if you're applying for an ADU, this doesn't apply.
Correct, so forget the ADUs, other than the fact that you cannot, other than the fact that if you allow an accessory structure to be bigger than nine hundred square feet, you also have to allow the ADU to be there.
Yeah.
Um, what is a lot of?
A lot?
Yeah, but.
It's.
No, 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 you're saying you're giving, there is no.
Oh, the number.
Yeah, look.
Like what's, what's the volume of variances coming through the shop here?
Uh, this month, they had two.
There's two.
So.
And that's their entire check-in. The zoning board's able to, being understood in the twelfth month, pretty much eliminated as it is. Go through the general assembly and the laws and how much power they're moving, so all the two, our shape variances.
Okay, so that's fine, then let's leave it and keep giving.
Well, and, and the reality, the reality of it is, is that they, this was something that had come up previously, but the general assembly really changed the landscape when they tied where you store your lawnmower to where you have put people to live and made those standards linked together. And so if you wanted to say to the zoning board, sure, we'll relieve you of all of these dimensional variances that you keep getting for these giant barns, you would be dragging ADUs with it, and that's not, I think, the direction you want to go in. So we appreciate that they wanted to stop seeing these, but it just, it doesn't really work because you would have to allow, if you upped the size of the accessory structure, you'd have to also follow suit with the ADU.
Yeah, which is sort of the, the, the bigger fish we want to throw, right? You know what I mean?
So because of that, they're not going to get their, you know, they're not going to stop seeing variances for accessory structures. I think you're, you're being reasonable about why.
So Todd, the ADUs are based on the primary dwelling, right? The primary, the primary dwelling, so the, the size of the ADU would not have anything to do with your accessory dwelling because the ADU is based on the size of the, the primary dwelling, not the accessory dwelling.
But the state law says that you can't regulate them differently. That's the problem.
Can't have different dimensional or development standards for ADUs than you do for accessory structures. My interpretation is that we could be more restrictive with accessory structures.
The reason is this, so they don't, you can't block out ADUs with separate accessory structure.
But the, all right, so the language says principal dwelling, right? So if your ADU can't be any greater than sixty percent of the floor of the principal dwelling, then why would someone, why would you?
I get your, your.
You, 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 so you built your garage, right? And you say, all right, well, I'm gonna build this garage. Did you say it was nine hundred?
Nine hundred.
Just for the size of the bedroom.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm losing it right now because this, this is really confusing me.
Well, you're looking at two different things, Adam.
I am.
There's, there's two different components to this. One is that internally, the ADU and the accessory structure are being tied to the size of the principal structure. That's one piece of it. The other piece of it that influences our ability to set what those numbers are is the fact that the law says that you can't create different standards for the shed than the accessory dwelling unit. So that's where we have.
They use eight sixty-four, it's a number lower than nine hundred.
Eight sixty-four was our number.
Was less than nine hundred, so they're kind of limited.
That was way before they created the sign.
This is the thing is, we can make this number for the accessories smaller, but we can't make it bigger than blocking ADUs from that size.
If you make that accessory structure size larger than the nine hundred, the ADU is going to go with it and push it.
So that's, but we can make it smaller, no problem.
Yes.
So going back to the four eighty is fine.
So I get what you're saying, Adam, is there's two pieces.
That's what I'm losing it right there, is that particular part.
There's two pieces to it, the actual, the actual structure itself is going to be tied to that percentage of the principal, but the law is telling you that you can't make different standards for those things.
Okay, so I'm gonna just try to bring it all home. So the, the proposal on the table is to, in number five, as edited on screen, make that four hundred and eighty square feet or sixty percent of the principal structure, whichever is less. Four hundred and eighty square feet is a good example of what a two-car garage, the dimensions would be, twenty-four by twenty. Again, there remains a mechanism in place for relief. And I can appreciate some volume concerns here, but if we have the flexibility to be more stringent on this, then I think we should take it and we'll see where, we'll see where things land.
Well, zoning is handled by the zoning manager, not so much the zoning board for these variances.
There's two mechanisms, a modification of up to twenty-five percent for the zone to be served. And if they want it greater than that, they'll apply for a variance with the zoning board.
Yeah.
Excuse me, the two, the, uh, the two that are on the zoning board are the one-twenty zone. It seems like we're having, you know, because of the zone change and the, the variances that are coming up next week.
But those are size variances, Rosemary.
Like the, uh, these guys?
I think they are, and over a thousand square feet, I think it's size. Like one was like fourteen hundred square feet.
We didn't hear any problems with the, with the setback standards, it was always the size that people were coming for relief from.
Okay, so the proposal on the table, four eighty square feet or sixty percent of the principal structure, whichever is less. Anybody have a problem, Todd?
Four eighty, support a silo and support a farming that maintain the rural character of the town.
There we go.
I will say, I think that this needs to go with a pretty good explanation when we send it over to the town council because I think this is, this is a perfect example, and I mean, I imagine somebody, one of us, somebody will be there, um, but this is a perfect example of like, somebody complaining and saying, it was eight sixty-four, now you're reducing it down to four eighty. We get all of these variance applications, you know, we should make this twelve hundred square feet. And there, this whole context is lost on that, like it's not there, and I wouldn't want that to be lost on people. There's a reason for picking this.
Yeah, no, I, I, yes, and I think it would be helpful to sort of put square footage numbers, which on paper can be sort of, sort of.
Hard to picture, hard to imagine, I don't understand.
Into a concrete example, as Alan has, which is, hey guys, a two-car garage is four hundred and eighty square feet at this dimension, right? And I think once you put it into like real terms, my sense is that people would be less apt to call it into question. Now, are we going to want people with bigger garages than twenty-four by twenty? Quite possibly, but again, there are mechanisms in place. I think we just gotta like, we gotta make it real for folks and not abstract. All right.
And so whichever is less language?
Yes. Unless this is going to the town council and back to us for a vote anyhow, right?
No.
No, no, we would, so it'll go through another round of editing based on our feedback tonight. All of that comes back to us, we approve it in the affirmative and pass it on to the town council who is the final blessing.
We still have some time.
Yeah, exactly, exactly.
All right, so next, I just tried to find better screening and fencing requirements than various districts, but if you want to. Residential zones, three-foot height for a fence in the front yard, four feet in the, yes, thank you, six in the rear.
All right, so residential, three-foot height of fence in the front, four-foot height on the side, six foot in the back.
Do we have the opportunity to talk about this or is this?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, four feet's fair, I think, and especially in more contact, yeah, it should be six feet.
Should be side and rear.
Yeah, definitely.
Like, Frank, you were only saying three, did that mean that, like, as somebody who has four very big dogs, I need at least four or five feet?
Yeah.
I can do four, but three, one of my dogs is like on high legs is six, two.
I mean, honestly, like, on how your lot is set up, it could really be in trouble privacy wise with a three-foot fence in, in the front yard because that could, your side yard could be your yard and your front fence is what gives you your privacy. I, I think if I had that set up, which I do, and I've considered putting a tall fence in my, my front yard.
So I'm gonna variance that, I think the greater concern is visual sight, sight lines with the front yard fence.
Mm-hmm.
Right?
So.
Can't you make a, but can't you make, if, if sight lines is the concern, then I know that there is provision, some ordinances have a provision that within so many feet of the street you can only, and then you can step the fence up from there if you're worried about blocking people's sight distances.
That makes sense, like my, my house is a, a. That makes sense. Like my, my house is a, a three-quarters of the neighborhood from my brother. So, and if I put a four, like, four-foot fence that you can see through, like one of the things that's worth trying to do there, nobody's from, on the main road, straight, they'll see.
Well, I think the solution is to say front yard setback, right?
So fences located in the front yard setback. Is that what you just articulated?
Because then the VA wants to have a six-foot fence deeper.
Correct.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
No one cares, and it's up to the effects like this.
But the same to it, like, if you're on the main road, you don't want a wall of like those white kind of limited fences where.
Right, right up against, yeah, the road.
But what happens if you have, a lot of residential has industry adjacent to it, like Fish Road. And you have, all of a sudden, you have industry being built next to you, and you have a five-foot setback or zero-foot setback, and you're not, and you have a four-foot wall? I mean, what kind of buffer is that? You know?
I don't think that scenario would happen, because those are not setbacks in the industrial district.
If you're an industrial property, there is no five-foot setback.
If, if you have a mixed-use residential on, on Fish Road, there is a zero setback unless you are adjacent to a neighbor, and then I think it's a ten-foot setback. But again, they have a fifty-foot height limit, and ten-feet setback of, next to residential really kind of limits, you know, your privacy. I mean, limits your privacy anyway, but I just, we don't, as, at, at one of the, um, at the season's hearing, one of the experts testified that Tiverton is unique in the fact that we have no buffers for residential to commercial or residential to industrial. And that, that he could think of no other town in Rhode Island that was like Tiverton, because other towns provide buffers. And here we are, and, and, and I'm not, I'm not a fan of fences, but I do, how many people, there's a lot of people who already.
I don't know if that's right, Jamie, so you're gonna have to hold on. Hang on, let's, let's look into that.
I think we're just throwing around district, like, dimensional standards. I don't, I don't know. Jamie, you're talking about in an industrial district, there's a ten-foot setback? No, there isn't.
Uh, in the waterfront, in the waterfront district, I think that is.
That's not an industrial district.
I think that's, uh, well, yeah, the waterfront does allow by right industry. And it has a five or ten-foot setback, and the neighbors, it's adjacent to, the waterfront end is adjacent to residential.
So, so your point is heard, your point is heard.
Thank you.
It's beneficial to actually get the facts out on the table here before we sort of spiral into non-facts. Um, so Todd, is that something that you're?
I'm not finding it right now.
Okay.
They can always apply their variants.
There is, there is the mechanism there, but I need to.
But I don't need to sort of thought, but any commercial industrial use is going to come before this board in one manner or another, whether it's development plan review.
And we dictate all of that.
Exactly.
Yes.
Yep, and frankly, anything in, in general commercial or highway commercial at that, which is the next section, right? Which has slightly different, right? So if you have a, if you have one of our residentials up against a general commercial, which is a scenario that exists in town, right? So there's the ability to have, out of the gate, a taller fence within that GC or a highway commercial. But again, Todd, to your point, Ashley, to your point, that development is coming before this board, and we would be examining that as part of the concept to master, to preliminary, to final plan. So we would have the ability to control and modify and ensure that matters of privacy on both sides of that equation can be adhered to and achieved.
Alright.
Well, if, if I write, it does say ten-foot, waterfront district has a ten-foot setback maximum. And, and you're gonna be hard pressed to try to explain to a developer that he has to go larger. And, and then you're telling a neighbor that he can have a, has to have a four-foot fence. It's, it just, to me, it just doesn't, I mean, you can plant trees and, and do that, but it takes a while. Or you can, you could ask the developer to plant trees, again, that they plant real things.
Well, yeah, I mean, we, I mean, landscaping is always a consideration that the board takes up with all applicable applications here.
I'm just really concerned about, I'm really concerned.
So Ashley and Todd, um, what do you need from the planning board with respect to fencing and screening? What kind of, what kind of feedback would you like? Um, Adam was giving you a little bit of feedback on height. I actually like the height numbers that you've, you've put in. Is there, what, what do other people feel about the height?
And, and we've changed, and we've clarified setback, right?
Yeah, I, you know, I think the front yard should be four feet, and I, I'd really decide really should only be six feet, just as a baseline. I really like the idea of being able to put a six-foot fence in from the setback, but I think a four-six-six baseline is good.
We also have a lot of houses that are on side roads, that the side of their house is on the main road. So you probably have to figure in that too. A lot, any, any, any houses on a side road, the side of the house faces the main road, there's a lot of three-foot, four-foot, three-foot, so if you're worried about aesthetics. So if aesthetics was the issue.
I just want to put some context to it, that when you're talking about a front yard setback in general, for, you're talking about thirty feet, forty feet, thirty-five feet, forty feet, forty feet, just so you know that that's, that's the s- for the setback. So for that distance, that fence can't be, has to be four feet or three feet.
And, and like if you live on a corner lot.
So I think it should be four then.
Yeah. Actually, we live on that corner, you consider it all the dogs, and.
You know, the one-twenty district is fifty feet.
So maybe just we increase the height, and there might be like, you know, a style issue, for example. Like, I know there's one house in my neighborhood that they basically put a white box around the area, um, actually, that you know, that I'm talking about. That, like, it's a little bit of an eyesore, right? So if you do something, maybe where it's the, like I said, the country fencing, where it's, you know, like a chicken wire or some sort of clear whatever, and you glue, we make it so it's see-through, and I think there's some standards there, maybe that's what it comes down to.
I, I don't want to get bogged down in this. I'll scrap it before we go on.
I, I, I agree. We could be here until the cows come home, uh, on this. So the, the counterproposal on the table is to remove the setback footage and just increase the size from three.
Three to four, right, and six on the side, six to six.
Yes, okay, so.
Consensus?
I agree.
I agree with that.
Yep.
Okay.
I think we've got a consensus.
Yes, I would, I would agree, so.
And those are, those are the heights, I mean, you can go smaller if you want.
Yes.
Right, as not to exceed.
Not to, not to exceed, that's a great point. So do we need, do we need to remove the setback footage then, or are we good?
Okay, that still applies, because outside of that, you can do whatever you want.
Correct, okay, great. So I think we're good here?
Yep. Can we just go to the seven permit for?
Seven permit for?
Yeah, the permit for, please. So, I did, so that was only official thing determined by that office, and I, I don't know what the town has right now for a permit when it comes to fencing. That, it just makes me uncomfortable, because I don't know exactly what that form will say, where it's gonna need a homeowner to do or to put a fence up. It's gonna be some type of engineering that needs to be done to a lot, like it'll wanna take on a five-hundred-dollar fence project that's gonna cost you five grand. The town is gonna make every, lots are made. Something, there should be, there should be something, you know, you just kind of talk to the nearest one.
I mean, I, I, I have pulled a permit, I'm.
You did?
Pretty sure, I guess.
I, I did.
So the, you're, the concern that you already said, Adam, is the need for a permit overall for a fence.
Right, I, I think it should be as simple as, as we could possibly come to, eliminating any real additional cost to handle just putting a fence.
So just to clarify, do we know, you don't know definitively?
I don't, I don't know.
So let's take that back, let's take that back as a, as an action item to investigate. Let's see if it's, it's actually required today. If so, that's a different story. If it's not currently required today, then I think we can take up the conversation about.
I would probably get a permit, I need fifty bucks, I guess, I see the purpose of that. That's it, just one of the permits, fifty dollars to go to the fence, I'd do it.
I think the idea is to make sure all rules.
Right.
You want the permit as a size.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
And if it's easy as that.
I mean, that, that is the mechanism for enforcement.
For enforcement, exactly. If you don't have a permit, there's no enforcement.
Yep.
People won't even know.
I made a note, I'll check with the zone office.
Perfect.
Nope, people will not even know.
Substandard lots of record, subparagraph A, it's just a correction from the existing unit code, nothing to do there, merger of lots. I put in permission permitting a property owner to appeal the zone officer's determination of a merger. But then, totally, they already have that, right?
They already do, you're just putting it.
It's in writing.
In writing, okay. Alright.
Dimensional requirements, I struck everything that we had, because you have, your current code has one substandard for residential, one for everything else, general laws do not recognize that difference. And because what general laws have required for substandard lots of record, I didn't see the need for any difference, ignore it, okay? As we talked about earlier, we've removed the requirement that substandard lots, uh, dimension standards be that of the closest lot available to them or zone available to them. I did leave that in there as an alternative. Again, we have proportional setbacks by statute. Same area, lot coverage is.
I would say go out, my bad. Well, one, I think after reduce to the, I think it's an extra document. Building setbacks off frontage and lot with requirements for a lot that is not conforming in an area shall be reduced to the required or greater of either. Just two, the two dots makes, makes sense.
I'm sorry, is it?
So number one.
When a building setbacks off frontage and lot with requirements for a lot that is not conforming in an area shall be reduced to the required or the greater of either.
Should it be requirement or? Yeah, there you go, it has one too many dots in it. There, you just fixed it.
So, right, well, I'm just, I'm just double checking, the, shall be reduced to require.
The greater meaning.
The greater, greater?
You had the require the greater.
Yeah.
To the requirement of the greater.
But I'm.
So you're, this is saying that if you could, town can pick whichever would produce the larger setback.
Some of the town picks is required. Is it the dimensional standards for an existing zone or fortunate?
It's whichever is, produces the greater setback.
Correct.
Now, these, this section, is this just again, like, to create clarity? The update to this, the dimensional.
They, well, they cha- they changed the language.
Okay, so this is the language change, so we're just matching that, okay.
This is their, their, their try.
So this language that is here before, right here, is state language.
Yeah, I didn't copy it word for word, I tried to clarify some places and break that.
Well, the, the dimensional, the proportional reduction is mostly word for word, that is the way the proportional reduction reads. The part about the zoning district is, it's permissive to the town, so if you want to allow that, you can. But it reads, however, to the extent the city or town has a zoning district in which the lot would be conforming as the size, the city or town may require compliance with the building setback, lot frontage and lot with requirements for said zoning district if such requirement is in the local zoning ordinance. You don't have to require that. But the way that Todd has crafted it is that you only get that if that produces a larger setback than the proportional reduction.
Or, or they're required to have that, if the proportional reduction would be miniscule.
So in a sense, that's the only thing we can really, that's the only question on the table.
Yes, whether you want to require them to conform with existing dimensional standards, impossible.
And that would be useful, potentially useful in a situation where you had a very small lot in a large zoning district that produced like two-foot setbacks.
Like high, like, south Tiverton area, those courses, standard lots.
Yeah, yeah, that's where that would happen, and this, the way that this is designed is that you wouldn't be, you wouldn't get to use that if it were conforming, so say it was a.
A ten-thousand-square-foot lot.
Exactly.
In a R-one-twenty zone, the proportion would be so small proportionally. But because it's a ten-thousand-square-foot lot, you have a TMS zone with certain dimensional standards, those would be greater than the proportional setbacks and should apply.
Comes in with a hardship. They'll, they can still ask, you can still ask for dimensional relief, you can ask for relief on top of your proportional reduction.
And.
So does everybody agree with that approach?
Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, I was gonna just play devil's advocate and just sort of constructively challenge, like, are there scenarios where this is not in our best interest, and is that more the exception or the norm? My sense is that it's, it would be more the exception in that the way that this is.
Us could ever.
I don't think it would ever result in negatives for the town playing it this way because you, it requires you to apply whichever mechanism produces a larger setback. So you're always gonna get more the way this is written.
Okay, and it's only on substandard lots, don't forget.
Yeah.
So you can have a huge lot in the north, north Tiverton area, right? Where small lots are required, you don't get to use this at all.
Got it, okay. Any concerns or?
I think we've got consensus, this is a good approach.
Yeah, I would agree. Alright. Moving on to article ten. Unless there's other components of this topic you want to talk about.
I just want to make sure, I, I just brought your attention to some things. I left in the existing language regarding setbacks, no pay shall reduce. I left in the existing language regarding setbacks, no pay shell agrees, don't accept that as a great setback that is less than the average of the adjacent properties within a 200 foot radius. I don't know if I would ever apply, I just thought it would carry a lot of coverage, proportionate setback or dimensions or the statute. I left in the existing standard on a lot of 10,000 square feet or less, maximum height 25 feet. Would the illness on the applicants make the initial calculations, present them to the zoning official? Right, and it's actually even given, they can still get a variance or modification. Okay? Next section, oh, oh, I'm sorry. Your current substandard lot ordinance permits people to apply for a special use permit for variance, right? Didn't make sense to me, doesn't make sense to most people, I think.
You'd also have to have specific and objective criteria for that special use permit, and I don't know what they would be.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay. Because I feel like you would need specific and objective criteria unique to every.
Possible scenario, yeah, it would be impossible.
Situation, yeah, which is impossible. Okay.
Modifications to dimensional requirements. The general assembly, I want to clarify that only those who received notice of a modification are allowed to object or have the battle objection. Concerned, I guess that neighborhood wells from all the parts of town will object. I don't, I don't think I would discuss this now, I'm sorry, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure I'm clear here, but what the state is saying is that you only get a voice to object if you've been officially noticed.
Correct. For a modification.
For a modification.
And this, there's not really anything for us to debate here because this is coming down, so this is more just an FYI.
The only, yeah, I mean, the only part of modifications that you had any purview over was the, whether you wanted 15% or something above that. For the zoning official to.
Modifications to the permit.
Yeah. And I wanna say you guys that originally put in is 15, the council puts it up to 25.
Correct.
Yes, that's right. And I, I don't know, you, you guys can say, I think I might be a little low, and I honestly don't know if there's a lower.
25%?
Yeah.
That's just one of the zoning official count, right?
Yeah, I get it, like, and it, like, and it's more than a.
Why would you cap it not?
Right, I know, but I feel like, it just seems like, it's something that, I don't know that it should not be capped, but I think that it's a, the number is restricted, especially if you have, you know, a, a big piece of property. 25% is a bit, kind of a small number if you have.
It's 25% of the qua- of the requirement.
That they can approve on their own or otherwise they have to come to.
They can approve a deviation of up to 25% of the requirement.
And, and that is, and that is set in state law, we have no, we have no.
Well, you have, you have to.
To pay, make it larger.
You can go, you can make it larger. I, I would say maybe don't do that to the zoning official until you've talked to him. Like.
Yeah. Would they comfortable making a call?
Well, I think it's worth, I mean, you're putting, you're putting an onerous on a staff person to do a certain level of review that previously was being done before a board, and I would advise, don't do that unless you have a conversation about it and let them weigh in and talk to you about how that works or how they feel about that standard, if it makes sense.
So that number can still increase, but it would just go to another level of.
But because it's.
Or, or that would be a. They want to go before 20, above.
He can go up to 25, anything above that goes up to the board already, yeah.
Yeah, so. And then, and then, and then that would go to the. Oh, yeah, okay.
So it's not that it's not allowed, it just has a different level of.
Yes, it's a different level of review.
The general assembly acted, enacted this neighborhood character based modification system. You can read it, straighten the statute. It, it has limited application, you have to have public sewer and water to do this. I just talked to John actually about a lot somewhere in town where this may apply, where there's an existing small structure, standalone structure on a, on a lot that they want to convert into a dwelling. And they have public sewer and water, John's going to talk to them about, or talk to the engineer to see if this will fit. All right?
So there's only potentially one lot in town when this is gonna be added?
I don't know.
Oh, okay, we were just saying there's one person.
There may be, there's, but.
There are some limitations to it, the lot, as like a building.
So, so private ordinance, or is that an option for this particular situation?
By statute.
So basically it fits in with the character of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, the reality is neighborhood character based modifications is really, I think, open up to subjective interpretation based on the surrounding area, the surrounding neighborhoods, right?
You have to do it by a, by a dimensional definition, so you have to do it, you have to be the, the mean of all parcels within 200 foot radius of your property, so.
It's taking it away from the zoning board, it's taking it away from advertising, notification.
Yep.
Yeah.
The general assembly is, not this board, not your solicitor or planner, the general assembly. We have way more work to do about this.
So that moves us to article 14.
Um, I'm talking about, so there we are.
And again, the, is this coming down from the paperwork or?
This is fixing. Just we look at this later. I really wanna get to checklist for the subdivision regulations.
Yeah, so let's do a time check, it's now 10 of 9, in theory we're going till 10. So I don't think we're gonna be able to get through what we originally intended for the full agenda here, uh, just given the pace of current conversation. So knowing that we have an hour and 10 minutes left, from a prioritization perspective, I'd look to you guys to sort of guide us where we, where we should be focusing.
I think, I think this is a very good meeting and I think we need more.
Yeah, I mean, we'll, we'll, we'll obviously have to schedule a second workshop here.
It's also recognition, recognition Rosemary that you've only had this stuff for a couple of days. Really?
I don't care, I mean, I like to read things and I don't wanna vote on something I haven't read.
I agree, you should.
So take us to where you really need feedback from the board tonight. And then we'll see how we do with the time, I, I agree with Bill, 10 o'clock is a reasonable time. Yep, it's actually out of my bedtime.
Yeah, I was gonna say, is that it was a little earlier, is there any dinner yet, have government allowed sugar snacks?
Dinner, so, dinner. You should have brought a snack.
I know, well, nobody eats with these things, I eat everywhere I go, so I feel bad about it.
Todd, can you give us more information about that?
About what?
NCVM. And then.
The neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean.
Character and face.
Did this come up way back, Ashley, you've been evolving this from the.
This is the new, this is, this is this year.
This year?
Yeah.
Okay, you think it'll go on?
We haven't even gotten to oversized lots on the, yeah.
I'm afraid. I mean, I can see it in the big cities.
Yes.
Where do you want, you wanna go?
I don't think we need to talk about the zoning ordinance. Did you have zoning ordinance, bud? No, what I had, the zoning ordinance, I mean, just read those with them for next conversation. We'll see, I, I tried to clarify nonconforming lots and structures. I fixed the vesting, vesting ordinance both there and in the subdivision regulations. And that's because of a problem we encountered with an application, that's all I'm gonna say about that. That needed to be better defined.
Okay.
So then if you go to the subdivision regulations that I provided to you, they have a new definition of subdivision, which as Ashley just alluded to, includes this oversized lot subdivision. Just read it, you don't have a choice in it.
So these are all just updates, adding out the updates.
That is, taken, yeah.
Did you add any what changed to minor subdivision definition?
No.
I have to, uh, we have to fully to put our documents together.
Um, I, I did change, is this, oh, preliminary, master, major land development, preliminary plan procedure, review procedure. General assembly struck, um, um, the highlighted sections here and moved those, like the state permits, moved those to final plan review, so I've done that for your regulations.
Which is clean up and bringing it in line with.
General laws.
No choice, yeah.
I know it's nice to focus that, yes, I'm sorry. Required findings, this we should talk about for just one second because the general assembly did, did do this. Your required findings. Number two, as highlighted. He complies with the standards and provisions of the town zoning ordinance or has obtained relief from the same, which makes sense. Page three of the subdivision regulations, Rosemary.
Page seven and five.
Did you find it, Rosemary?
No.
The second smaller handout, it's the same, it's the seven trays at the bottom here.
So, so Todd, um. We, we make these required findings every time we approve subdivision. And what the state is doing here is, the state has made some modifications.
Correct.
So, uh, the, the required findings that we make now are not something that the town has any control over. They are, they are administered to us by the state as a required findings. So what you're doing is you're simply bringing our findings of fact, our required findings of fact into conformity with a new state language.
That's correct.
And we have no choice in the matter.
That's correct.
Therefore, there's no discussion. We, we can complain about it, but there's really no discussion.
That is correct.
Is there anything in this document that we can comment on?
Yeah, is there anything that you need our feedback on, John?
You, you can comment on the legal status vested rights. As I just suggested to you, this is a response to a problem that we encountered. And I hope it's a good fix. Because the language was never clear as to applications versus approved, approved plans and what was vested. The statutes obviously already define what is vested or approved plan. And there, and how the general laws address applications being vested was not as clear. So we've tried to do that here. Both between the planning board and administrative officer and unified developments. And essentially it's all one, the certificate of completeness is issued.
And that's what I was gonna say, is that we've, we've tied substantially complete to an actual certificate of completeness. Because we've had that argument, it is.
So, so we have objectively defined.
Yeah, because the, the law just says substantially complete and then doesn't define what that means.
And we tied that to our certificate of.
And power of law regulation didn't define what that meant, but now we say that that means that you've been certified complete.
Which makes a lot of sense.
Currently, your ordinance, and it's only in zoning ordinance, says that a planning board application is complete at preliminary, preliminary plan approval.
It's weird.
It, it was ve- exactly, though, it made no sense whatsoever as to an application. How, when, what, how could your master plan application then ever be vested? Right, so this is what that tries to address, same language is in the zoning ordinance.
And then so after that entire, like, the application, all of this time limits, that is all new clarified?
Yes. The time limits of development for planning board projects is set by the general laws. That's, that's a section of each of the minor land development and major land development statutes.
Okay.
As reference.
So that's this subdivision, right?
Ashley?
Yeah.
Would you like me to pull up?
Well, let's maybe pull up the ordinance part of it first, that I can. So Todd and I will have to bring these things together into a single document, but what I view is the language changes that we would need for pulling the checklists and forms out of the regulations so that we can be a little more fluent with those, especially with regard to now online permitting. So.
You have on screen the full reference checklist, phantom.
Yes. Yes. So these are not fully formatted, they're not renumbered, um, that's one thing I wanna ask you about. Um, but the first thing that we did, and so you'll see there's minor changes where we struck out a word here or a partial part of a sentence and added in a part of a sentence, and that really is just with regard to where these checklists live. Right now, they're called attachments, and so we took out that language of attachment and said that they're referenced in the regulations. We added a section as to what those checklist and forms are and listed them by name. Um, we put in requirements about the checklist that they have to be filled out, they have to be provided with an application. Um, you're, we don't commence your review period unless you provide a filled out checklist. That does come from state law, so we're just reinforcing that. We're basically telling people you have to provide two paper copies and a digital copy in order to be reviewed for certification of completeness. Um, we did pull out the forms, we named those, you know, we named each form, gave it a title, and then we added a section that said that this is where these forms and checklist live and that they are amended from time to time by either the planning board or the administrative officer.
Here's my question on all of this, how does this, if at all, how is it impacted by what came out of the legislative session this time around about the new portal that the state is standing on? For.
Yeah.
Applications.
Yeah.
In an attempt to standardize and across communities.
So, I think what's getting standardized is the mechanism of submission and that's it, from what I can tell. Because I'm doing this in three, two and a half places. And I am also in talking to the, the gentleman at DVR who is essentially responsible for implementing this, um, have talked about how other people are also doing it. And I think we've come to the, and Ed and I have met with him repeatedly and I, we've kind of come to the conclusion that the, the best way to use this system and not necessarily disrupt what we do on a, on a normal basis in terms of receiving an application, reviewing that application, issuing a certificate, is to use the online permitting portal as a mechanism for sub. is to use the online permitting portal as a mechanism for submission only. So, we've asked them to structure the, the portal for application to essentially be an application. So you're gonna have to fill out some information in a, in a, there's gonna be a landing page. You're gonna have to identify, there's also gonna be a set of instructions on that landing page. There's also gonna be a disclaimer that if you submit outside of normal business hours, like, we're not, you're not taking away our days to review by submitting on the Friday at, you know, 7:00 PM on, on a three day weekend. And then we've lost four days by the time we even know there's anything in there. So we've, we're setting all that up, and it'll be a set of instructions with that disclaimer. And it will operate where you will choose your, I think, in theory, it will operate where you choose your type of application. And when you choose your type of application, you will, you will see downloadable forms. It'll be the application form, the checklist, any of the other, you know, forms and documents that we would expect to see as part of an application. The, the person applying will be able to pull those down. Whether they get filled out online or you have to print it and fill it out, we haven't gotten to that point yet. I'd like to make them fillable PDFs so that they can just do them online. But we don't want electronic signatures. Like, I want somebody to have to actually sign the document, and if that means that you have to fill it out online, print it, sign it, and upload it, that's fine. We've, I've been warned by other people that they were having problems with forgery on online systems, and they can't, you can't, it's very difficult to prove who, who, who put in that electronic signature. If it wasn't the person that's supposed to do it, who did it? How do you prove that? So we just said, let's just not accept them. So they will fill all that out, they will have all of their documentation that they would normally give us in a digital version of their application. They will be able to upload that into the portal. So we will get a filled out application form that's signed. We will get a checklist that's filled out and signed. And then they will upload all of their supporting materials into the portal, and we will pull that information down, and we will review it like we have always reviewed it.
So my question then is, are all of these new checklist? And I know it's not new, it's a re.
It's a reformatting.
Reformatting from the nomenclature. All of this is going to have to then get put within that portal?
Yes.
Okay.
And we have been working with them and providing the documents, and they will put it up there. So if we, we change this format and we want those checklists up there, we'll just simply tell that, I mean, at some point, we'll have it, we'll be doing it. We'll have the administrative ability.
Which is easier, better, we can control our own destiny.
Yes.
Okay, that's fair.
So, the idea behind the language that's in here is that because those checklists and forms are gonna live independently, we wanted to tie them back to the regulation as much as possible in writing so that nobody had an argument to say, like, oh, that, that's, you know, that you can't impose that on, you have some document over here that's not part of the regulation. But by reference and by listing all of them, they are part of the regulation by reference. So you'll also see that in each of the sections, I then inserted the name of the applicable checklist.
Hold on.
Yep.
You require two paper copies and an electronic copy?
Initially.
Is the same or when they have to submit the others? The other copies?
Uh, I will double check. I saw, I, maybe I did, I don't know. We, I will have to double check if we did that.
And then, we also talked about when that mission is deemed received.
Yeah, I, we, we have a huge problem with this.
Right.
We have a huge problem with applicants, applications coming in in pieces. We have problems with resubmissions coming in in pieces.
But e- even more simple than that, though, with the electronic portal now. If they submit it at midnight, tonight, is it deemed received?
No.
Or like, tonight?
No.
Is that, where is that written?
That is written. That is somewhere in here.
Okay.
It is, it's in here somewhere.
Okay.
I think. I worked, the last time I worked on this, it was very late at night.
With the board, you, you can't, um, submit an application in pieces, alright? Or reject it if it's complete?
I, we will have to manually reject it. It's not gonna get rejected without.
It's a lot different than, uh, it's, it's not, so you have, I guess, a digital checklist written in this board?
Nope.
I need to have the, the board work, it's not, I guess, it's on. You don't have to do it now.
Yeah, no, I mean, this has been a, this has been, this has been an ex, a frustrating exercise with them because the bottom line is that this, this software system is not designed for complex applications like this. I specifically asked to, to, to say, like, I, I envisioned an application process in here that would, would have a checklist. And I would go through, and I would check a box, and I would say that I submitted those items. And maybe there was a box underneath where I would say that it's in, you know, it's in the site plan and it's on page six. Because that's my, my end goal is to make the applicant tell us where these things are so that we spend a lot less time searching through endless reams of paper looking for things. The problem is, is that apparently this software is not designable to be an actual checklist. And if you were to design it where you require certain items, if, if you say it's required, it requi, the soft, the software requires that you upload something as a response.
Yeah, right, right, right.
So I explained, you know, we use, like, traffic study. It's on the checklist. It's not always applicable to the, to the development because it might just not be something that generates any traffic, and we don't need a traffic study. So I said, can I say NA, not applicable, and give a reason? No, if it's a requirement, you have to upload something. I'm like, but I wanna make it a requirement sometimes, and not all the time. The only way to do that is to go in manually to the specific application and turn it on. How do I know that I need to turn it on when you're applying? I don't know what you're applying for.
Yeah, so, ahead of that checklist, you would have the ability to select what, I, I guess, we'll just represent with it, what type of divot you have in your proposal? And then the.
Not available.
Oh, yeah, then, yeah, the, the, the things that are not applicable are not available. Would not need to be a consideration because they would not be in the checklist.
Well, the problem is, is that these are checklists that apply to a variety of different.
Right, I guess depending on the application, you'd have a different, you'd have a checklist based on each application.
For every possible permutation of an application. If we had to have hundreds of checklists. It would, that wouldn't work.
I have a question. Is this tech issue what we're, is this?
It feels like a tech issue.
It is a tech issue. The state chose.
Yeah.
A software that doesn't accommodate the complexity of what they have.
All I wanted to make sure with my line of question was that whatever we were putting in here will align and not run afoul of this new portal technology.
Yes, yes. So.
It does not sound like it's gonna run afoul.
I don't think it will. I think the way you should look at this is that after, like, many rounds of, like, well, why ca- can we do this? No, it doesn't work like that. Well, how about this? No, it doesn't work like that. Well, if you do this, then you can't do that. And I, I just got to the point where I was like, you know what? Just, it just receives the application the same way that we receive it now. I don't wanna try to build this as it's being flown, like, just, we'll go online on time. It will receive an application.
We'll have to pull it down.
We'll get notified that there's an application. They will upload their documents. It is essentially gonna act like it's emailing to Ed, but they are emailing to Ed. Like, they're putting it into the portal the same way that they would load it up into an email with all of their attachments, and they would send it over to Ed. We're not gonna use the portal to send it over to Ed. If we can, and the goal is to continue to look at this and work on this and get comfortable with the software and continue to improve the way we structure it working. But without a good understanding of actually how it operates and knowing that every time we said, like, well, what about this? We've got back, like, well, no, it doesn't work like that. It just, it, we weren't gonna get it done in time if we kept going around like that, so we just dumbed it down.
Got it. So the point is, though, that's a completely, it's related, but it's a completely separate and distinct matter.
Yes.
Not necessarily totally pertinent to us being able to get through this documentation before it's done.
Well, the idea being that it will help us a lot if we can get these checklists out so that we can amend the format of them, so that the newly formatted checklist are what go up into the portal for people to pull down and fill out.
And this is what is happening, us achieve that?
Yes.
Correct, okay.
Okay, I have, I have a concern. My concern is, um, taking the checklist, which is the list of items that we require from applicants to submit to the planning board at master plan, preliminary plan, final plan, so that, so that the planning board can make well-informed findings of fact. If we take those out of the subdivision regulations, will they lose legal clout? Will they be something that an applicant can say, well, it's not even in your subdivision regulation, so we don't have to submit it? I, I mean, we went through our, our checklists maybe five, six years ago when Sue Gill was chair. And, um, to make sure that we weren't asking applicants for information that we really didn't need. Take the, take the burden off the applicant so they didn't have to do a lot of, give us a lot of paperwork that we really didn't need. But also to look at what we really did need. And, and, um, and so that stay in the subdivision regulations. On the other hand, I understand Ashley's issue about the, the fact that we wanna give the checklist a little more flexibility. We wanna give the AO or the planner a little more, uh, control over the checklist so that we don't have to have an advertised public hearing every time we change the checklist because the checklist is part of the subdivision regulations. So I, can, can you respond very briefly to that? Because I don't want, I don't want the planning board to lose control or, or the planner, AO, to lose control over the kinds of information we're getting because we're getting a lot, to, to some extent, we have some resistance there.
Alright, let's get a response there, and then Alan's been trying to get in on the question.
Well, I feel fine with it, but he's the lawyer.
Yes, the regulations incorporate the checklists.
So.
So we're, we're not losing any teeth.
And, and we're not the only town that does this.
Right, and, 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 and I just wanted to go on record saying that, so everybody understood.
No, it's a, it's a totally valid concern, and it's something that we've talked about. When we did, I did this with them in Hockington. We did it essentially the same way, where we made specific references to every section, what checklist was applicable, what, how it had to be filed.
So checklists, checklists are mandatory.
Yes.
Legally mandatory, end of discussion.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Alan.
Uh, the two things was, when you use this website, do you log into it? Does it have a database, basically? So it looks like there's an awful lot of checklist to fill out. Does it store your previous answers? Because some of these things may not be available in one sitting. You fill out half of these checklists, and if you have to log out and do it another time, it just loses everything?
It would be a downloadable.
It saves everything?
It would be, well, those would be on there as a downloadable form. Like, you're not actually filling it out on the website.
You're not filling out fields.
Online.
Online, you're downloading the form.
You're downloading and uploading.
And you don't have a place where you can, basically, there's only a certain amount of things you can be applying for, correct?
Yeah.
Yeah, so you could probably make a, a massive checklist for each one of those things that you're doing. The required checklist, and have a menu at the beginning, I'm applying for this, and only those things are there as a checklist?
It, well, we can't build a checklist in the software.
No, 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 I think what Alan is saying is that, okay, we got thirteen checklists here, right? And if I start the process and say, I'm applying for this, only checklist items one, four, seven, ten, and twelve apply to that, so only those pop. I, you know, it's a level of customization.
Because the consumer frustration is probably half a, gonna be half of the problem.
It's gonna be most of the lawyers and engineers. Especially with the planning board.
Yeah. Yeah, meaning, they're well-adapt, they'll navigate this. Less risk of certain user frustration.
Again, we, we, I don't know exactly what this is gonna look like. We're gonna, we're gonna do our best, and we're gonna set it up, and it's gonna go live, and we're gonna run into problems, and Ed and I are gonna have to figure out how to fix that.
There's no difference between today and either, Alan. Where we have all these checklists available.
Yeah, yeah.
Right, and if they don't know which ones to use, they have to call the.
Right, yes.
They're all listed on the website of the town, under the planning board, and they're just, just a straight a checklist. You have to know what you're looking for, or you have to ask.
Yeah, in, in a perfect world, we'd say if X, then Y, or if A, then B. And it takes a confusion out of it, but we don't.
And the, the problem, and, and this is, you know, this is part of the problem with the software is the software is, is designed for X and Y in black and white, and planning is of fifty-seven shades of gray. It's, it's not this, it's not that, it's not a straight line. It's an if this, then that, then this, then that.
It's a choose your own intent.
Yes, and it doesn't, this software doesn't do that well. So in each of the beginning parts of the section, so like, under, I'm on page three, under minor land development, you'll see there's a general description of what is contained within checklist C, and it tells you that that is the applicable checklist for this type of application. So we did that in each section. I'm gonna keep just kind of scrolling, um. Till I run into something.
When a checklist comes in, is it reviewed fairly quickly? Do you feed back to them? You know, the thing I found most irritating is, you come in, we had one, yeah, up to long the last couple of weeks, well, there's twelve items that they just said final. Well, if you don't need to tell the final, why would it say even on, on the checklist? Or.
That's application dependent.
Who empowered them to say this is not applicable?
Well, they don't have that power. We've run into this a lot. I get a checklist and it says NA. Why? Why is this not applicable to you? Would you like to explain? The checklist format that we've put together requires that you tell us why, and if you don't, it's deficient.
And gets sent back.
And it gets kicked back.
And gets sent back, yeah.
But they do it all the time.
And they don't put narratives in there?
I know.
I mean, you, I think, so, yeah, but we get horrible submissions from people.
I, we have seen some pretty, pretty bad ones. I mean, I had one person, I said, I said, I need your OWTS. You didn't give me your permit. They wrote the permit number.
Yeah.
For me to go get. No, I sent it back. You're getting paid, not me. So, we've, we, we can talk about the content of checklist a whole nother day, that all we did basically was move over what you have now into a newer format to try to make it easier for us to review and to try to make the applicant who's putting together the checklist identify where they've put these things. Because some of them might be, it might be a symbol on a map that's literally this big in a twenty-page plan sheet. It would be a lot faster if you just told me where it was.
So in this document, you've given us the lay of the land here.
Yes.
I've scrolled through, seems pretty straightforward. Is there anything else on this document that you would call out to the board that we should?
There was one, and we can reserve, we can reserve some of this. There was one, um, early on on page two. There is language in there now that is related to, um, where there, where people are voluntarily merging lots. I think that's gonna come up a lot, a lot less now, but I, I think this is a little too loosey-goosey. I think you need something a little better than what's in here if you want to allow this. And we, I actually did, and I don't remember if I did this in Truss County or Exeter, but we did create a, essentially what's called a merger administrative subdivision. When you're erasing a property line, we lowered the standard for what you have to submit because I don't care if it's not a class one survey, if you're just erasing a line. I care that it's a class one survey when you're moving a line. But if you're just getting rid of it, I don't need a class one survey. So we did create a, like, a merger. So I would say, if you want to keep this provision, I would recommend actually creating, like, a, a, a type of application for it and having some standards.
So, I'm sorry, Ashley, where exactly should we be looking?
I'm on page two, um, bottom of page two. So, again, we don't have to do this now, I just, as I was working. So, again, we don't have to do this now, I just, as I was working through this, saw that and calmed it out. We can set that aside for now, I, we don't have to. Or if you're in agreement that you generally want to keep this type of application, we can, we can expand on it and create almost like a two-part administrative subdivision, one when you get rid of lines, and one when you're moving lines.
That, that would be my preference.
I, I would say if, from experience, I would like to see what was and what is, whether it's a dotted line.
Oh, yeah, no, you've still gotta show us. I just don't need you to survey the line that you're getting rid of.
So to Stu's point, I do think there's value in breaking that out into two separate things, because it creates efficiencies for the applicant, efficiencies for staff. I say we do it.
Okay, the other one that I thought of when I was going through this is I think that instead, like, I, we, this hasn't happened as much here, but in other places I've got in requests, when there's a large piece of property and they want to move a line, that the, because the standard says a class-one survey, it doesn't distinguish that it, they don't, maybe they shouldn't have to survey the entire six acres with a class-one survey, that they should only have to survey the area that they're actually moving lines.
That makes a lot of sense.
And I can't do that right now unless we write that in.
I would say write it in. Because that-
I agree with you. That's reasonable.
Okay. Do you wanna elaborate?
I've seen some problems by some developers regarding objects.
I would be interested to know what, what that, like, the context of that, so that if I do draft something, we could, I can maybe account for that not happening again. But I don't know the circumstances, so I don't, I don't know what that means.
You know, the, how large is the parcel?
I think that, I think that it's dependent, and I think that the administrative officer should be able to kind of use their discretion, that obviously if this is a ten thousand square foot lot, like, there's probably not much of this that we wouldn't want to go survey. But if we're talking about twelve acres, and they're selling off like twenty thousand square feet to their neighbor, I don't think they should have to survey twelve acres. I think they should survey the location where they're moving lines.
Well, as long as there's a note on the plan that describes what they're doing in detail.
Well, the, the plan would look the same, and it would, the, the plan would look like an administrative subdivision plan. The difference would be the class of survey. So instead of the entire property being a class-one survey, only the location where the lines are moving would be a class-one survey, and the rest of it could be a class-three survey, it could be a compilation survey. It could be something of a, a much lesser standard, because surveying a huge property like that is wildly expensive. Okay. If you wanna share some specific concerns, I think we can try to adjust the language for those. Other things to call your attention to, besides kind of the, the stuff we've, the standard stuff we went over on page eight. So you have this section on commercial and industrial development design. I started amending this, and then, second-guessed myself, 'cause I, I did a search for attachment. So every time attachment came up, I pulled that section, and this had attachment in it, and then I started reading, and then I started amending, and then I had second thoughts, that I don't know that you need this.
What are you trying to achieve it?
Well, I would ask that what this is trying to achieve, that your new design criteria would not achieve. Like, we're pulling all the design criteria into the subdivision regulations that talk about industrial design, commercial design, you know, all the, all the districts that are non-residential, and this is specific to commercial and industrial development and design, and talks about, you know, where the buildings are located. Environmentally sensitive areas should be avoided, like the-
Which could be in conflict with all of the new designs.
I think it's already covered, and probably in greater detail than it's covered here, which is just kind of vague.
So based on-
And, and this was, this was, this was put in years ago, probably taken out of, of some other community's subdivision regulations. So, and probably does not apply now.
Well, I think by moving the design requirements for all types of non-residential development into your subdivision regulations, you've covered this ten times over.
Which means we can delete.
I think you can delete this.
I agree with that.
And obviously, we're gonna pull, we're gonna combine all this together, so that at the same time, you're bringing design in, you're taking this out, 'cause I don't wanna do that not coordinated.
Is there anything on page nine you wanna call out, the final page?
I think we have to figure out what to do with, so you do have one DPR checklist. I think we'll have to turn that into two.
I'm sorry, DPR?
I'm on page eight.
Development plan review.
Development plan review. So you have one development plan review checklist, but we have a two-phase development plan review. So I think we'll have to take that checklist and split that into two. One for preliminary plan, development plan review, and one for final. So we will have to make those, um. So I think Todd, under submission requirements, is where I'm gonna add that language that I said that I thought that I'd put in there, right?
Submission requirements for DPR.
Oh, is it? Oh, yeah, it is, all right, so we have to add that somewhere. Okay, so then, I gave you a table that tells you what it was named before, what it's named now, just so you could kind of, I needed to keep track too, but this way you could keep track. Um, and then the only other thing that I'd like to hear from you on would be the checklist format that we put together. Again, if I changed anything, I did, I believe I highlighted it. We gave you one checklist as an example of what we're proposing as a format. And we really did want these things to kind of, because these are gonna get placed on a application website, and they're gonna be kind of floating independently there, we wanted to make sure that they, we could always tie it back to an application, so we're gonna make you tell us, you know, who you are, how we get in touch with you. And then we gave you instructions. I'm gonna take those instructions and essentially copy that into the subdivision regulations. To Todd's point, that should be in the regulations in terms of what's required as a submission, when you can submit.
Do, do, uh, I don't wanna open up Pandora's box here, but I'm gonna ask the question. Do we currently have any sort of unique alphanumeric identifier?
For application.
For applications?
We don't.
But this system might-
The system, we're thinking the system will have some kind of ID number.
Which, which standardizes it, and makes it a hell of a lot easier to track across all of the steps and the journey, 'cause if you write the name one way here, and then write the name a different way here, you might not be able to tick and tie those together, but if you have a standardized-
Yeah, I mean, I, I've always advocated-
Unique identifier.
Advocated for everything to be identified by Platten Lot. Because that is a unique identifier, or that's used across every, everything. The assessor, the zoning official, the building official, everybody uses the Platten Lot.
And what you're, what you're saying is that you think, we don't know for sure-
We think.
We think that the new state system will assign a unique identifier. Again, we don't have to solve for that here. I think from a model of just management and efficiency, it would be great to get to a standardized, unique identifier system that just takes the ambiguity out of it, and allows for greater, like, searching ability, tracking, and-
And with Platten Lot, though, Ashley, you could have multiple applications, so, an application-
You could.
Right.
It's not typical, but you could.
And again, we're not gonna solve for this here, right? Like, it was just a question as we were going through this.
I have a question, when, with all of these documents and forms, is the, the, I guess, current approach or kind of the anticipation is that they all get pulled down, filled out, and then compiled into one PDF and uploaded similar, like, as one PDF? Or are they uploaded individually?
I don't know what I hate more, whether they're individ- I would prefer that they're individual PDFs if they're named something other than nonsense, which is, you constantly get nonsense names that mean absolutely nothing to us. And so then you, I will often go in and rename, because I will never remember that this, like, string of letters and numbers is the stormwater report. When you, it's, I think it's worse when it's a four-hundred-page document.
The reason I'm asking is that on the form document, like, and for example, when you submit something to the FDA, there is a, like, working in healthcare, if you're gonna submit something for FDA review, there is certain, like, code, whatever it goes with here, a specific file name.
Yeah, I've toyed with the idea of getting that specific with people, because you can't even imagine how much time we waste on nonsense like that.
I rename PDFs like half of the day.
So I, I have actually toyed with the idea of the instructions being that specific. That this is how you shall name files.
Honestly, I think you, like, well, 'cause what I'm thinking about, when I was looking at, like, location and all of that, if I would say, what's the file name and the page number, right? 'Cause I think that would be more simplified.
Yeah, we're, we're working on, like, we're, like, this is, we're building the plane, and we're flying it, but I, I agree with that, and I, 'cause, like I said, I didn't think about the idea that it would be beneficial to, to have a naming requirement, because it would make, it would just make it so much easier.
I think the other-
It would be faster for them too.
The other, the other little problem or issue or aggravation that I've noticed is that sometimes we'll get applications that are huge, and, you know, just a huge stack of paper, most of which is just boilerplate, doesn't even, you know, relate to, we'll get traffic reports like that. We'll get engineering reports like that, and, you know, and, and then trying to dig through to find things that are specific to the project, but they do that to kind of intimidate us, you know? Here's our five-hundred-page, you know, traffic report, bang on the table, you know? What do you think of that, you know? And some people would be intimidated by it, and throw up their hands and say, "I agree with everything in the report." So I don't know if we can actually, you know, I probably, it would probably be in violation of free speech to, you know, to-
So Ashley, oh, your, your report has to specifically address these points and nothing else. Just a thought, what other feedback on the form, the, the example that you want right now?
What I, I mean, whatever you wanna give us feedback on, we, we, I think we recognize that this is a work in progress.
Yep.
The hope is that by setting up the checklist this way, and putting some onerous on the applicant to tell us where they put things, that it'll make reviewing easier. I'm, we're absolutely open to suggestions if you come up with a better idea.
I would, I would say that if you're gonna open up this window of opportunities, you and Ed should go after what is going to make your jobs easier, more efficient, which has value in term to the applicant and the process, right? So if you wanna, if you wanna mandate a simple file name nomenclature, go do it, right? If you want to, whatever, go do it. Like, I'm, I'm not going to dictate, like, "Hey, this, this column should be wider," or, "Hey, less wide," like, I'm not gonna do that here.
No, I know.
I don't think the planning board is, is even, is even really qualified to make very good recommendations. You deal with this every day, you know where the problems are, you know what's broken and what needs to be fixed. Fix it, and I'll support you a hundred percent.
I appreciate that. I, I am always willing to have a conversation about it, though, 'cause I don't profess to have the best solution. I might know what the problem is, but I think it's worth sometimes talking through what the solutions are. So if you have any ideas or suggestions, we're happy to hear them, um, and I think these-
The only thing we care about as a planning board is, are we getting the information we really need?
I am a big proponent of the naming convention, and I'd be happy to help you with that, because we get those files, and it's like to your, it's the same file, yeah, and I got it, and I am. So I would be happy to help with the convention.
Yeah, if you have a suggestive, like, naming convention, I would be happy to take that. So the other thing that we did is, we put a section at the end for checklist notes and comments, and this is essentially where we told people, if you provide an NA, you have to provide an explanation. And we gave ourselves a space there to respond to that, and then we also gave ourselves space to just make any general comments that we wanted to in the checklist. So with your agreement, we would make, we would format all of the checklist this way. I will clean up the language the way we talked about it. Todd and I will have to smash these sections together into one document, and then we can bring this back to you.
Alan, did you have a question?
It was just on the, uh, are we, is this open for, to, to discuss, um, something in the proposed conditions? And then, it's a part of the checklist, or is that for another?
That's up to you guys. I mean, very little in a way changes to the checklist requirements, just the formatting.
So I wanted to see if we could add something to this, we don't know if this is the, the regulations. For the proposed conditions.
Yeah, listen, part of the reason we're doing this is so we can make changes as necessary to meet their needs, right? Without a public hearing, but right now is a popular time.
Yeah, go for it. So we have, uh, we're working on a hydraulic study, right? For the town, which water we use. So I, I think we should add something into this to give the applicant, the applicant, well, not the applicant, to force them to develop how much water their particular, uh, you know, development is gonna use. You know, if you got two hundred, three hundred people going into this development, or maximum number of people are gonna be in development, how much water is that gonna be? So we can use that number up against what we believe is an, an, an amount of water that, you know, that we can, how to be used, that, that, um- So that our system can take-
They already do that. They have to go, an applicant of, of, of any substantial-sized development has to go to the two water authorities, whether they're in Stonebridge or North Devon.
It's not only-
They go to one or the other. Yes, it is. It's actually in our subdivision regulations. We actually put it in there. That's maybe none of the checklist.
It's a determination letter, but it's not a specific, like, they don't have to specifically say to the planning board, "This is how much water we're gonna use in our development based on blah, blah, blah." They have to go to the water authority.
They have to go to the water authority, and then the water authority knows whether or not it-
That's real.
And so that's, that's where it belongs. It doesn't belong with us, because those numbers don't, don't mean a whole lot to us. They mean a whole lot to the water authorities. If they have a hydraulic model, then they can put it into it.
So I'm just giving a time check here. So, um, you-
Done good.
Okay, so is there, we, we are now at nine forty. What else for input can we give you? Obviously, we're gonna need to continue this discussion, because we're gonna get through everything. I'm gonna, I'm, I'm not gonna belabor it here, but maybe at our, uh, maybe at two A, or the October seventh, maybe we can stick an agenda item on there to identify our next workshop date. But is there anything else you guys want, feedback at this point on?
Can, can I ask a question about where we stand with the architectural design standards?
You have, you have all of that. That, we would roll all of this, everything that we went over tonight, plus the document that we gave you, I don't even remember when, now. We would pull all of that into one set of regulation, subdivision regulation changes, that you would then have a public hearing on and do at once.
And, but doesn't, wouldn't the subdivision regulations need to reference, um, zoning, a zoning provision in order to give those- provision in order to give those real teeth?
I, you, you're asking about enabling ordinance and the zoning ordinance.
Exactly, and enabling ordinance and the zoning ordinance, that's, you know, that says the town of Devon reserves the right to.
Yep.
Okay, and, and then, and then, and refers then, would refer people then to the sub, the section in the subdivision regulations that would apply.
Yes.
That's fine, that's, I, I just wanna make sure that we're, we haven't forgotten about that, because it, because that issue comes up time and time again in the conference.
I didn't get it written up, but, you know, we have to do the enable legislation for that zoning.
And it, and it wouldn't be long or complicated.
It's gonna be like what we do with TRC, Stu.
Exactly, very simple, okay, that's fine, okay, I just, I just didn't want that.
Nope.
It's a good question.
Yep, anything else? Uh, just housekeeping, Ed, my version of the agenda is September 25th, 2020, so I don't know if that needs to get updated, all of that sort of stuff.
Sort of.
Uh, yeah, it does need, um, so, all right, anything else? Okay, we'll wrap, let me once again thank Todd and Ashley and Ed for the support here to get all of this through, an immense amount of prep, it's arduous, but it's required, so thank you guys very much, thank you to the board for sticking through this, making sausage, you know what I mean, it's, but it's necessary work, appreciate all of the dialogue, to those who stuck it out in, in the audience, I think you just earned the merit badge, uh, so, thank you everyone, and we'll see you on October 7th. All those in favor? There we go.